Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for May 21st, 2024. Tonight, we are missing Councilmember Nguyen-House, who is away on business, and I would like to have a motion to excuse his absence.
Shall I move?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And tonight, we have Karen working as our clerk tonight. Charmaine is out. So with that, could you please do the roll call?
Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Malakutian.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House. Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Deputy Mayor, could you lead us in the flag salute, please?
We hold the traditions of the flag in our states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In just for all.
So we have three proclamations tonight. We have the National Public Works Week proclamation, the National Safe Boating and Paddling Week, and we have Older Americans Month. And I think what we'll do is we'll read all the proclamations, and then we'll let the people speak to them, and then we'll do pictures at the end altogether. So we'll start with the National Public Works Week's proclamation with Councilmembers on, and the recipients are Lucy Liu from Utilities and Andrew Singalakis from Transportation. Councilmembers on.
Turn up your mic, Mayor. We can't hear you.
Can you turn up my mic?
They're very intelligent. Too much.
Hopefully, we'll, we can make this a little louder for you. Okay, go ahead, Councilmembers on.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Whereas public work services are essential to the day-to-day lives of Bellevue residents and businesses, and whereas public works professionals plan, design, construct, and maintain the infrastructure, facilities, and services of vital importance to the life and well-being of people in Bellevue, and whereas it's important for residents and businesses to recognize and support the fundamental operations of public work such as transportation network and traffic signal maintenance, providing reliable and safe water, maintaining stormwater, surface water, and wastewater structures, and managing public buildings and vehicle fleets, and whereas Bellevue's quality of life depends upon public works operations, facilities, and essential services, as well as the professionals making these services possible, and whereas it is in the public interest to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works to everyday life in Bellevue, and whereas this year marks the 64th Annual Public, National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association with the theme "Advancing Quality of Life for All." Now therefore, I, Janice Son, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to the 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week in Bellevue, and encourage all community members and civic organizations to recognize the contributions that public work staff make every day to our city's health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Great. And so Lucy and Andrew, would you like to come up? And John. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and city council members for recognizing everybody and all the hard work that we do in public works, as public works professionals here for the city of Bellevue. This year's public works theme, as mentioned, was Advancing Quality of Life for All, and it pretty much sums up all that we do, the dedication of our staff every day. And I want to thank, take this chance to thank everybody in Transportation, Utilities, and FAM for the significant impact they make in the lives of everybody who lives, works, and plays in Bellevue, including me. Everything transportation does from planning, maintenance, design, construction, inspections, permitting enhances the quality of life for all of us in our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. On behalf of the public works professionals of Bellevue Utilities, thank you for this recognition and declaration. Our team works to ensure that our community has access to essential utility services that we all rely on every day. So that includes providing safe, reliable drinking water, maintaining our crucial wastewater and storm and surface water systems, as well as ensuring reliable garbage recycling and composting services. And there's plenty that happens behind the scenes, from planning, design, and construction of utility infrastructure, to the administrative customer service and system support functions. And so all of the public works professionals play a key role in ensuring the city runs smoothly. So just thank you once again for this opportunity to recognize the work of our dedicated staff.
Great, thank you. And John Risa from Finance.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Also, thank you from the public works professionals from Finance and Asset Management. We have the privilege of managing more than a dozen buildings and over a thousand vehicles for the city, and supporting all of the operations to make our services and our deliverables as a city happen. It is our privilege and our pleasure to provide that service, and all of our staff want to thank you for recognizing us and having that opportunity. As I was saying before, public works is more than just the vest. We are all of those services that support who and how we operate as a city, and the stewardship that's important to all of us. And thank you for that.
Great. Thank you. So go ahead and sit down, then we'll come back later and do pictures. Next, we have Councilmember Lee reading the proclamation for National Safe Boating and Paddling Week.
Whereas recreational boating is a popular activity in the many lakes and waters around Bellevue, and whereas since 2020, there has been a surge of people engaging in paddling activities, many without any training, paddling fatalities now constitute more than 25% of all boating fatalities nationwide. And whereas knowledge and skills are important in allowing boaters to protect themselves and their friends and family through safe practices and precautionary measures, and whereas most of the serious boating and paddling accidents are caused by lack of training, human error, or poor judgment, and whereas failing to follow nautical rules, using drugs or alcohol while controlling a boat or choosing not to wear a life vest add significant risk, and whereas the proper equipment such as life jackets and engaging in preparedness activities such as checking the weather ahead of time save lives, and whereas the U.S. Coast Guard and the America's Boating Club of Bellevue are invested in the well-being of the community and are committed to providing free vessel safety checks for the community. Now therefore, I, Conrad Lee, on behalf of the Mayor of City of Bellevue, Lynn Robinson, and on behalf of its city council, to hereby proclaim the week of May 18 through 24, 2024, as National Safe Boating and Paddling Week, and urge all community members to practice year-round safe boating practices, and to boat smart, boat safe, and wear it while underwater.
Great, thank you. So we have Dale Vodica from the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary. We have Diane Henrich, Barbara Erickson, and Steve Erickson, members of the Bellevue Sail and Powers Squadron. Would you like to come up and speak, please?
I have one, I have one other member, Dave Savage.
Sure, great.
Okay. Yes. So, are we on?
Yeah.
Yes, we'd like, I'd like to thank you again for recognizing National Safe Boating Week, and recognizing that the city of Bellevue has numerous, numerous ways of enjoying boating, including the 10.1 nautical miles along your shoreline for the city with the Lake, Lake Washington, and 2.1 nautical miles of shoreline on Lake Sammish, among other lakes encompassed within the city and waterways. As you indicated in the proclamation, the focus this year is on paddlecraft. During the pandemic, paddlecraft operation was discovered as a socially-distanced activity, and we had a number of people pick up this little piece of plastic at the box store without any, anything. Unfortunately, that has resulted in a number of deaths and injuries. So if you are climbing in a car, you put on a seatbelt. If you climb on a boat, if you climb on a bicycle or a motorcycle, you put on a helmet. We'd like to highly suggest if you get aboard a boat, you put on a life jacket, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, stick around, and we'll do a picture after our other proclamation, which is Older Americans Month, being read by Councilmember Hamilton.
Whereas President John F. Kennedy designated May as Senior Citizens Month to pay tribute to older adults across the country, in 1980, President Carter changed the name to Older Americans Month. And whereas Bellevue includes a growing number of older persons with a wealth of knowledge and experience, 13% of the city's residents are 65 years of age or older. And whereas people are living longer, the average life expectancy in King County is 81 and a half years, exceeding both the national and state averages. And whereas, in a recent survey for the Human Services Needs Update, nearly a third of Bellevue residents noted lack of services for older adults as an issue. And whereas the Bellevue Network on Aging, a group of volunteers and city staff, is dedicated to healthy aging in the community by promoting awareness of needs and resources that support older adults through life's transitions. And whereas the city of Bellevue strives to provide opportunities to meet the changing needs of a more active, diverse, older adult population, engaging older adults through education, recreation, and service while encouraging people of all ages to celebrate connections and build social resilience. Now therefore, I, Dave Hamilton, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Older Americans Month in Bellevue, and urge all community members to appreciate the value of older adults, help to create an inclusive society, and recognize those who support older adults as essential contributors to the strength of our community.
Thank you so much. And here to accept is Abigail Brown from the Bellevue Network on Aging, as well as Beth Hanley, Kari Marino, Andrea Klein, and Elaine Lee, and then we have Shelley Brittingham and Dan Lassiter from the city. So we just need a couple of people to talk now, and then we'll all get together for the picture. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you. Thank you. You took some of the words out of my mouth because I was actually going to introduce everybody. I want to thank you for acknowledging this. I also want to make mention of the fact that the numbers since the last census have actually increased. So we've started with 13%. We're probably approaching 19% now. So it's a good thing. We are all living longer. This year's theme, Powered by Connection, focuses on the profound impact that meaningful connections have on the well-being and health of older adults. How can the community mark Older Adults Month? Spread the word about the mental, physical, and emotional health benefits of social connection through professional and personal networks. Promote opportunities to engage, like cultural activities, recreational programs, and interact virtual events. Connect older adults with local services, such as counseling, that can help them overcome obstacles to meaningful relationships and access to support systems. Host connection-centric events or programs where older adults can serve as mentors to peers, younger adults, or youths. Invite more connection into your life by finding a new passion, joining a social club, taking a class, or trying new activities in your community. Stay engaged in your community by giving back through volunteering, working, teaching, or mentoring, and investing time with people to build new relationships and discover deeper connections. To that end, the City of Bellevue Parks and Community Services Department has older adult connection opportunities at many of its recreation sites. The North Bellevue Community Center has received another three-year King County Veteran/Senior Human Services Levy Award to fund activity that builds senior hub activity for connecting older adults. The Bellevue Network on Aging, a network under the Park and Community Services Department, supports these connections by advocating for the needs of older adults and participating in the city of Bellevue's planning processes as community members reflecting needs through eyes, through the eyes of older adults. Some of these needs include affordable housing and have adequate affordable, and having adequate affordable transportation that kays to the needs of older adults in Bellevue. So with that, I just want to thank you again. It's always good to see you, and we really appreciate your support. Thank you for this proclamation for Older Adults Month.
Terrific.
Wonderful.
Shall we all get, come up and have a picture together? Motion to approve the agenda.
I approve, I move to approve the agenda.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next up, we have Oral Communications. Karen.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are nine pre-registered speakers this evening. Before I start calling names, I will go over a few of the rules that the council has in place. The total time for oral communications is not to exceed 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to City of Bellevue government. People speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and if time remains, people speaking to items not on tonight's agenda will be called. The presiding officer is authorized in both of these categories to give preference to people who have not spoken to council within the last 60 days, or who will be speaking to items that will come before council within the next 60 days. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and a maximum of three speakers are allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. And with that, I will call our first speaker, who is Troy Schmile.
So I'm just going to ask of all our public commenters that we be respectful and polite and try to speak without using foul language or name-calling. I'm sure we can do that. Thank you so much.
Should be able to do that.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Troy Schmile, and I'm both a Bellevue resident and a local home builder. Overall, I like the new tree credit approach that the city is taking with their new tree code. As long-term, it is a better way to achieve tree canopy across the city, but I do have some concerns. First, while the new tree code does address maintaining density, it does not address maintaining lot coverage or floor area ratio, both of which are very important to not losing potential housing. I've talked to staff about the Kirkland Code, which does the best job I've seen so far, and the Kirkland Zoning Code 9530.2 reads, "The city does not require tree retention efforts that would either (a) would reduce the maximum allowed density, number of allowed lots, maximum allowed floor area ratio, or lot coverage; (b) preclude the ability to construct ADUs consistent with Kirkland Zoning Code; or (c) preclude required access and utility connections." So I think that needs to be addressed. Second, the tree code needs to allow the applicant to determine the best way to meet the code with flexibility on retaining versus planting. And then third is the quantity of retained trees. I've looked at a number of codes. I work at a number of jurisdictions. The City of Kirkland Code, the City of Bering Code, and even Bellevue's own consultants all have a tree retention amount that is typically one credit per 1,000 feet of lot area. That would mean a 10,000-square-foot lot would need 10 tree credits. For some reason, Bellevue's proposed code is two credits per 1,000 in the standard zoning, which is the R3.5, R4, and R5, and five in the bigger lots, which means you'd be trying to keep 200 to 500% more trees on those lots, which I have done the math, and I don't think is actually going to be possible. Overall, again, I like the code. I like where it's going. Please make this a fair and balanced code that takes into account both housing and trees. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Barbara Braun.
And I'm going to say that the first speaker is opposed to the tree codes as written, just so we have some consistency. So that's one opposed.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council leaders. My name is Barbara Braun. I'm a founding member and treasurer of 300 Trees and an active supporter of preserving and improving tree canopy in Bellevue. I am speaking tonight in favor of adopting, as quickly as possible, the tree LUCA as recommended by city staff, and in favor of approving the follow-on provisions, projects they are proposing that will enable tree LUCA implementation. Bellevue's main strategy for 40% tree canopy is to have trees planted on private property. This strategy will only work if mature trees are retained and new trees are planted. Given how long it takes for trees to provide shade and other services, and given climate change is only accelerating, it makes no sense to cut down our healthy, mature trees. While residents are accepting of development in our city, they have been alarmed by the pace and scale of tree removal in Bellevue. The last tree canopy survey showed Bellevue lost 65 acres of trees between 2019 and 2021, and large-scale development has only accelerated since then. Most objectionable is the rampant clearcutting of our neighborhoods, lot by lot, in the name of redevelopment. Development and trees can coexist with thoughtful planning and regulation. Over the last two and a half years, Trees for Livability and thousands of residents have advocated for a stronger tree preservation ordinance. Residents have been highly engaged with city staff on the LUCA development. The minimum tree density approach is brilliant and easy to understand. It provides developers with flexibility balanced with the expectation that our tree canopy will be retained and improved. The passing of the LUCA will be Bellevue living its values and a firm commitment to retaining our city in a park. Given the scale of development, I believe we will need to go beyond codes and enforcement to maintain our tree canopy. Additional future actions may be needed, such as we should restore our tree canopy along the highways once the expansions of the highways are complete. We could work with the school districts to reforest school properties, and we should require new buildings and remodels to add sidewalks and street trees as part of their project requirements. Thank you for listening to the community and for acting. We are encouraged by the continued commitment to our collective values and a sustainable future for all. Thank you, and congratulations to the city staff who are leading and implementing this important work.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Joseph Eschbach, who is joining us virtually. Mr. Eschbach, can you hear me?
Thank you.
Perfect. Your time starts now.
Hi. I am involved with the Trees for Livability Group, and I am very concerned about what I see happening with the lack of attention on our trees. I've lived in Bellevue for 60 years, almost born here, which I could say I was native, but I'm not. But during the time I've been here, I, I feel like what's different today, the challenge today is, you know, with housing and all, you're getting these small lots in, you know, areas like East Gate and Lake Hills, where builders are coming in and, you know, tearing down, you know, the 1,200-square-foot homes and putting in 3,000, 4,000-square-foot homes, and extending that footprint, concrete footprint, as far out as they can, and trees get in the way. And, and we're seeing that time and time again, and they just are maximizing profits to build the homes that they can build. And I just feel that that's wrong. I, I first want to congratulate the, the city of Bellevue for years, decades of being business-friendly. I think that that, I like that. I like that we're, unlike Seattle, we've taken a little different tact to, to, to certain things that Seattle has not, but I think we're, we're losing our soul a little bit. And, you know, as someone who loves nature and loves trees, I'm seeing, you know, certain areas, maybe not so much in some neighborhoods, like, like the Somerset area that I live in, but in areas, just, you know, blocks from where my mom lives in Lake Hills, it's just really sad seeing the development that's occurring. And I get angry at the builders, but I, I think the city of Bellevue needs to, you know, support these tree ordinances and act on it as quickly as possible, and, and know that you can't just solve the issue by letting people replant trees that have been growing for 40-plus years and, and that were cut down because they're inconveniently in the wrong place. I just think there's more we can do, and the quicker we act, the better for existing residents, better for the environment, and, and the nature, and, and just the soul of the city. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Veronica Shikotko.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Veronica Shikotko. I'm with the Master Builders Association of King and Snohomish Counties. The NBA and its members have been working with staff and the BDC over the last six months to provide input on the proposed tree canopy LUCA. We appreciate the staff's interaction and willingness to hear our comments. We have raised several issues and concerns that the Planning Commission has acknowledged, but they have not had, they did not have the opportunity to address in the version for the council to approve. These include considering housing impact data, ensuring middle housing compliance and flexibility, and reviewing site plan examples to illustrate how the code would be clear and predictable for applicants and homeowners. You've also received the May 10th letter from our general counsel that requests these items identified by the Planning Commission and asks for substantive changes that are specifically outlined. In broad terms, we have, we hope our comments will promote a balanced, a balance between tree retention goals and GMA planning objectives. We believe that adding more housing choices does not have to come at the expense of having, excuse me, having a healthy tree canopy. We are concerned that the language does not currently meet GMA obligations, and while environment and climate change are important GMA planning goals, there are other goals that should be considered. These include encouraging urban growth, preventing sprawl, protecting property rights, and planning for and accommodating housing for all income levels. Neither the language nor the technical report address supply or affordability of housing, and there is no mention of housing targets that are, excuse me, that are required by the GMA. We ask that application of this tree code not result in a net loss of housing. The LUCA does include some language reflecting that tree requirements not trump some other requirements in the Land Use Code and City Design Standards. However, the current language is too narrowly focused on density and lot yield. To protect the ability to provide housing and comply with new middle housing laws, it should also include the number of lots allowed and the maximum floor area ratio allowed. We would like to be your partners in balancing trees and housing, and we respectfully request that you consider making some substantive changes to these issues. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Larry Graham.
Good evening. I'm going to talk really fast. Just quoting Dr. Seuss's Lorax, "I'm here to speak for the trees. Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not." Large trees in a tree canopy are a very significant asset to the city of Bellevue and the entire planet, especially significant during times of major climate change and the continuing use of fossil fuels and the existential threat posed. Major bleaching of ocean coral reefs, intensifying and more common storms, horrible smoke from burning forests, many days during recent summers, Seattle has poorest air quality in the world, intensified hurricanes, suffocating heat, heat problems becoming common even in the Pacific Northwest today, and just a few. We need strong incentives so builders retain as many trees as reasonably possible, and homeowners do not simply destroy beautiful carbon-eating tree canopies for no logical reasons. And we need strong rules requiring the planting of more trees. The proposed LUCA's do all of this while being flexible and simple to implement. We also need follow-up by the city council to add enforcement rules. The Pacific Northwest is gifted with amazing trees, and especially in urban areas of rapid human population growth, they need protection. Trees go to our very essence in the Pacific Northwest. What I have witnessed in just my neighborhood is very sad and emotionally challenging. In many instances, it is existing homeowners who destroy canopy for no logical reason. Immediately behind me, a new home was built, and about 15 huge, beautiful trees were destroyed. The 30%, 30% retention rule was presumably followed, a mostly meaningless rule in and of itself. A few years later, the same homeowner took down another stand of about five huge trees because he wanted sun in his yard. We now have increased We now have increased traffic noise, shade elimination, and hot sun pounding on our yards and homes, no songbirds, natural beauty destroyed, just crank on those air conditioners. If folks want sun and don't like trees, they should move to treeless areas. To move to an older, established tree canopy neighborhood and to then destroy all the trees makes no sense. Appropriate rules would encourage these folks to look elsewhere. A couple of deep lots boarding in Kalani Glen Park, deep, deep lots, filled with trees, they just took down the trees. The trees were way far away from their homes. Why? Why take down 30, 15 trees?
Excuse me, Mr. Zimmerman, please do not interrupt the public speakers.
MN Construction just completed a 6,000-square-foot home right next to my home. I pleaded with them to retain a huge, beautiful cedar between our home and the new home. Without my pleading, that tree would not be there. That, the positive impact is huge. The cedar provides the softest ambience for the two lots, adds depth and beauty, immense privacy for both homes. And the argument the trees pose a significant danger to homeowners is hogwash. Everything we do in life comes with some risks. Falling trees is not a huge risk. Bo Arts just down the street from me is filled with beautiful trees, homes nestled in the trees, people walk through that place in awe. And I don't know of any major human catastrophe that has happened in the last 100 years by anybody living in Bo's Arts. And so I just, you know, it's very, okay. Thank you.
So I believe that's three in favor of the tree codes as proposed.
Our next speaker is Krishiv Goswami.
Hello, and thank you for this opportunity. We are part of the FIRST Robotics Organization, and we're here to tell you about what is FIRST, why we're presenting, and what we want you guys to do about our organization.
FIRST means for inspiration and recognition of science and technology. This summarizes what our goal is, to spread awareness about STEM-based topics among our peers, kids every age from preschool all the way up to high school. We're a robotics team participating in the FIRST Tech Challenge, which is one of the many levels of the FIRST Robotics Organization for kids in 7th to 12th grade. There are levels designed for children of all age ranges to get children introduced to robotics and eventually get them to design their own robots, code them to compete with them. Robotics is one of the fields of the future with job opportunities, especially in cities like our own.
We are presenting here to spread awareness about the opportunities that FIRST presents to the people. You all council members are the face of Bellevue, and we would like to share with you how FIRST is going to help us in the future. The opportunities that FIRST presents are in the fields of finance and coding and computer science, which are all going to be major job opportunities in the future, and we would like kids who are interested in STEAM to get a head start and cultivate their own interests sooner than, rather than later, so that they can get a head start.
Yeah, we're all eighth graders, and we're part of this FIRST team, and it's just been an amazing experience, and we want to spread that. And as stated earlier, you all are the face of Bellevue, so we want to spread that into Bellevue, and we want to spread that into our schools, so that our, the children from a young age can start learning about science, technology, engineering, and math. So for those reasons, what we want to do is we want to spread FIRST throughout Bellevue and also into our schools. That's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Good job.
Our next speaker is Todd Levitt.
Hi. Good evening, Todd Levitt. Murray Franklin Holmes, and also a member of the Master Builders Association. And by the way, I'd rather be talking robotics. That was pretty cool. No, I think, I want to make it clear, I don't think I'm going to sit here and say I'm opposed, certainly as a builder, and quite honestly, as an industry. I think we're asking for further refinement. First off, I want to compliment staff. Staff, this is one of the more professional staffs we work with as an industry. They've worked really hard on outreach. I understand there's a lot of different folks they're trying to listen to. We understand that, and really need to applaud staff, how they went through this. At the end of the day, we got to a place maybe where we agree to disagree, and I'm glad we're here, or you guys are here to do a study session. As far as the study session goes, I'm hoping, I was hoping to see you guys look at how this will impact housing. Unfortunately, unless something has changed since the Planning Commission, I don't see how you can do that. The industry is screaming out loud, as you can tell, that there are going to be detrimental impacts to housing. And during Planning Commission, staff, during the Q and A with staff, they were asked, were there any studies looked at when it came to this Luca on trees as it relates to housing? And in a very honest moment, you know, staff acknowledged that, no, they were myopic in that their direction, and they got to go with the direction they were given, was to look solely at trees. So I don't know how, and I'm glad we're having a study session on it, I don't know how you can move forward without at least understanding the impacts to housing. If you go through that and you land on the same thing, then we can have that discussion, but I'm not even sure how, at this point, you can even have that discussion until you really understand the impacts to housing. And we believe there will be tremendous potential impacts to housing, delivering diverse housing, which is in your guys' comp plan as a vision to your diverse population. The other component to this is the discretionary component within the code right now. I would tell you, as you study this, and you ask the question, if an applicant comes in and meets the credit-based system, which by the way, we as an industry agree, the credit-based system is the way to go, we applaud staff and the city for heading in that direction. If an applicant comes in with a plan that meets the credit-based system based on a complete replanting plan, but there are landmarks, there are groves on the property, how does staff weigh that? How do they go through that discretion? I was in a meeting here in the last couple of weeks with staff on another component of the code that was discretionary, and it puts staff in a very tough position. You can hear, how did this happen? What was the intent? They're going back 10, 15 years to try to understand the intent. The job should be by council to put in a code that not only an applicant, your staff, your landowners, your property owners, understand black and white going into something. Right now, there's too much discretion and a lack of understanding of what you will get at the end of the day. Thank you.
So that, even though you have a nuance there, I have to list you as a no for the codes as written, so that would be our third one for that.
Our next speaker is Maria Hui.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson, and fellow council members, for the opportunity to comment on the economic development study sessions. My name is Maria Lau Hui, and I'm the chair and treasurer of the Belvedere Art District Community Alliance. Our mission is to cultivate a sustainable environment, creative district, that celebrates a diverse community and meaningfully connects everyone through arts, culture, and innovation. The arts humanize, invigorate, and beautify the built environment and public spaces. Their importance, accessibility, and thoughtful creative placemaking play a significant role in enhancing our community's cultural fabric and increasing social cohesion and quality of life. As a partner in district building, the community alliance is a newborn, a baby. We started the organization last year, formalized as a business entity in May, and earned our 501(c) nonprofit status in November. Most recently, we hired Amy Reola, a powerhouse in the nonprofit and arts community, as our interim executive director. We are extremely grateful for the partnership with the city, especially the support and collaboration from the arts and economic development teams with Lori, April, Edward, Jessie, and others. Despite our infancy, we have built lots of momentum along the way, including the most recent San Transit Belvedere Station opening celebration, where over 35,000 people were able to see what the district has to offer. As we continue to grow, we see advocacy for Belvedere and the arts and cultural organization being critical. We could not stress how important it is to daylight creativity of this emerging, yet fragile, ecosystem and to build a cohesive identity. We want a walkable and connected district, easily identifiable by signage and accessible public artwork. We want to preserve existing, existing and attract new arts and cultural organizations and partner. We want to have affordable artist housing and more affordable commercial spaces. We need support and resources to do so. A sustainable, functional model like that provided by a business improvement district will be helpful as we scale our organization and amplify the community's voices by attracting more volunteers and future staff. Arts and culture are not intangible assets. The data tells us that Bellevue's nonprofit arts and cultural industry generated $54.3 million in economic activities in 2022. By supporting the Belvedere Art District, we are investing in the enrichment and vitality of our community. Thank you.
Our final pre-registered speaker is Alex Zimmerman.
Thank you. I'm always happy when you give me a chance to speak for my tribute. Only for a tribute. Yeah, my name is Alex Zimmerman, and I am president of Stand Up America. Guys, council, honestly, I love you. You're a very good team. You understand what I mean? You're very powerful, very powerful. My powerful probably isn't football player, yeah, yeah. Right now, I'll explain to you in detail why I like you. I love you, yeah. The hell, my dirty damn Nazi fascists, you know what I mean, and antisemite. But you're very good. Why? For 10% of people in Bellevue who support you, 9% never support you, you elect same people again and again and again. And look, you all seven are identical. By definition, I recognize you, so you're very low-class people, a human garbage. It's exactly what is who you are. You understand what is my talking? And people who come here and talking, it's naive children, you know what I mean? They thinking when they talking to you, we'll change something. No, you cannot, because you have, what is I call? This is specific animal action, you know what I mean? You drink from fat cat toilet. So water, what is you drink from fat cat toilets? It's a poison. Poison, what is you make you totally different? And right now, you cannot care about 150,000 people who live in Bellevue. Everything what is you care only about corporation. Is this exactly what is you can see in every election, you know what I mean? So this is very interesting for me, because I live this for 40 years, you know what I mean? And try understand how 150,000 Bellevue freaking slave and happy cow, a pure idiota, come to this condition? So 10% of people control everybody. Why? Why they all scared, you know what I mean? No, they not scared. It's very smart. They don't want go against, what, a stupid? No. They smart. Yeah, I understand. They slave, but happy slave, a happy cow, I call them. So my proposition right now to you, staying in same direction, because what is you doing right now for Bellevue is not enough, make condition much worse, make city totally for aristocrat, totally for fat cat, and totally for corporation. It's exactly what is we doing this, you know what I mean? And what is I see this? And I will talking about this. So you a crook, a low-life animal, what is we need stopping? So I speak right now to 150,000 idiot who live in this city. Stand up, freaking cretina. Need changes. We need bring America back. We will bring Bellevue back again. Thank you very much.
That is the end of our pre-registered list of speakers this evening. I'll ask at this point if there's anyone else that would like to speak. If you are online, please use the raise hand function. Seeing no additional hands, mayor, I will turn it back to you.
You may come speak, but I just want you to know, we've already reached our limit on pro or con on the tree codes, so I'm hoping it's a different topic than that.
My topic is pro Bellevue City Council.
Okay.
That's my topic. It's a great responsibility. I'm not sure whether it's a greater responsibility or a greater opportunity, but Wilberton rezone is obviously going to happen, and it's exciting what's possible here. I just want you to think about some of the things that make other parts of town livable and focus on those issues. I would use it as an example, Main Street, that's the example I would use if it happened organically, but there are certain rules and certain policies that your staff knows, and they're very experienced in that. And that's really all I want to say. Thank you for your effort and for all your hard work.
Thanks so much.
And that's the end of our all-coms. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, next up is the report of the city manager, Ms. Carlson.
Thank you, mayor, and council members. I'm very pleased to have you on the show.
I'm Jessica Segal and Nico Chiano here tonight. They're from the city manager's office, and they are going to provide you an update on the city's Safe Parking Pilot Program. The program started accepting residents in the last few weeks, and so this is timely to give you an update on how it's going. I'll turn it over to Nico. Thank you.
Council, thank you for the opportunity to provide another update on the city's Safe Parking Pilot. I had the opportunity to join For Tomorrow and some of their program participants and volunteers this past Wednesday for their first community dinner at the city of Bellevue's new Safe Parking Pilot Program. That meant that for the first time since I began working on this program, I was able to sit next to one of the families that will participate in the program in the program location, which was an incredible privilege, both because it was such a relief to see that we were offering somewhere to go to the family with three young children that I sat next to, and also because the staff person with For Tomorrow that cooked the empanadas for everyone did a killer job. Several of you were kind enough to visit the site and tour the day center a few weeks ago and saw the incredible work For Tomorrow put in to convert it to a welcoming space. In the intervening weeks, they put some final touches in, couches here, tables there, decorations, curtains, that have rendered the space essentially unrecognizable from how it looked just a few months ago. Warm, clean, safe, inviting. You've all heard the basic details of the program, a safe, fenced, monitored parking lot, indoor facilities including a kitchen, bathroom with showers, laundry rooms, and onsite staff that are focused on helping resolve short-term issues and find long-term housing, but here are some new details for you. As of this morning, I've referred 11 households to that program. These are families that were referred to me by Bellevue School District staff, from Mary's Place Outreach staff, that I or my staff are already working with, or that were working with other local service providers. Those 11 households are composed of 35 people, 16 adults and 19 children as young as six months old. I have a two-year-old son. I have six and eight-year-old nieces. I taught in elementary school and then worked with teens and young adults at risk of homelessness prior to taking this job. It's hard not to see those families and children in the folks I've spoken to and referred to our new Safe Parking Program. Hard not to imagine how hard it must be, knowing how chaotic it can be to be a parent of a young child, even without the added stress of having to pack your whole life and your whole family into your car at the end of every night. As was the case when we celebrated the opening of Porchley and Plymouth Crossing at East Case Campus a year ago, it's such a huge relief to me, and it seems to them, to be able to tell them that we're offering a program that can help. Monique ForTomorrow's executive director told me that a couple of families nearly started crying from relief when they completed enrollment in the program. We're already seeing positive outcomes. I'm told one family is supposed to get the keys for their new apartment today. Another parent emailed me to celebrate receiving a job offer. I don't want to misrepresent the situation. Not every family or individual in this program is going to be housed overnight. ForTomorrow staff also told me that while they have been doing intakes, they got a sense of the enormity of this challenge, the trauma and hurt these families are carrying with them, the massive barriers to long-term stability. But last Wednesday, we got to share delicious homemade empanadas together, and I'm proud to report that for at least the duration of this pilot, we'll have enthusiastic staff working every day to help people living in their vehicles figure out what comes next.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, and we don't comment with the city manager's report, but I will say, even though we had full council support for this program, I have to commend council members on for initiating the work on this. So thank you. Really good news. Anything else, city manager?
No, mayor, that's it for my report.
Okay. So next, we have the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we have three study session items up next. City manager, why don't you introduce the first one for us, please?
Thank you, mayor and council. As you're aware, this study session will cover the recommended land use code amendments to update tree preservation, retention, replacement, and protection. It's culmination of over a year of work, including extensive community engagement, And this work has been a priority for the council. So the staff tonight is going to present the land use code changes, and they're seeking direction on the code that's been recommended by the Planning Commission to bring back for adoption at a future meeting. We have Assistant Director Nick Wible, Rebecca Horner, our Director of Development Services, Christina Gallant, our Planning Manager, and they're joined by the Planning Commission Vice Chair Gopel. So with that, I will hand it over to Nick.
Thank you, Acting City Manager Carlson, and good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, members of the council. We are excited to be here tonight. We are joined by the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission, Creighton Gopel, as well. Tonight, it does mark a significant milestone for the tree canopy land use code amendment. Some of you may know that the tree requirements were first introduced in the city in 1982. Since then, the city has periodically updated its tree rules over the years, but it's been more than 40 years since we've been able to take a comprehensive look at the tree codes that we have in place until this project. So about a year and a half ago, the council initiated this code amendment to provide a comprehensive review of our current tree regulations and update those. So Christina and the team have been engaging with the diverse group of stakeholders and community members throughout the year and a half that this has been in process. And even before then, we had a lot of community interest in this project. So Christina will also touch on some of that outreach through the project. The Planning Commission has also spent a considerable amount of time reviewing the land use code amendment and listening to the community feedback throughout the course of three study sessions and a public hearing, which brings us to tonight and the direction that we are asking for this evening from you all, which is to direct staff to finalize this land use code amendment ordinance for final action at a future meeting. And with that, I will turn this over to Christina to walk us through what we have planned for the presentation.
Thank you, Nick. Good evening. So our agenda tonight, we will first be covering a recap of the objectives for this project. We will then summarize our engagement efforts so far, then walk through the components of the recommended LUCA. Following that, we will introduce Vice Chair Gopel to provide the Planning Commission's recommendation and discussion. We will then recap the LUCA process to date and move on to a reminder of our direction. So for our high-level objectives for the project, the origin for this work comes from our environmental stewardship plan. Strategy N1 calls for the city to increase and maintain our 40% tree canopy citywide. To that end, it calls for us to do a comprehensive review of our code provisions related to trees. As Nick noted, we have some that have long been here that needed to be refreshed and rechecked with the way development looks today. We also have some related objectives to incentivize the right tree in the right place and identify opportunities for tracking data on trees, which are both efforts we're advancing with this work. Other objectives specific to this project, again, this is our opportunity for a comprehensive review of code provisions related to trees, generally with the goal of better supporting tree preservation, retention, replacement, and protection. At the same time, and which has been one of our primary objectives from the beginning, we are balancing housing production needs. As those council members who were with us last year likely recall, this has always been one of our goals. We are also seeking to improve the function and clarity of our code and capture better data. So some additional guidance that we've heard in previous briefings with the council and in our study sessions with the Planning Commission, we've heard a strong emphasis on preventing excessive lot clearing before development, to encourage the right tree in the right place. On a related note, incorporating species considerations to encourage more native or climate resilient trees. We are also seeking to avoid one-size-fits-all requirements. We are, will be evaluating our enforcement provisions. At the same time, also thinking about ways we can look towards incentives instead of strict limitations wherever it's possible. And finally, to ensure our regulations are simple to follow. So with the level of public interest and impact of this work, we did implement a broader public engagement plan. So in addition to our standard process for requirements, including a notice of public hearing, public hearing, notice of application, we've employed a number of other methods, holding listening sessions with project stakeholders. We held an online questionnaire for the community, translated it into multiple languages. We held two in-person public information sessions. We did provide a public draft of the LUCA in March to gather stakeholder input and direct testing. We've held briefings and discussion with the BDC, also worked with direct input from residents, neighborhoods, and community organizations, as well as having a strong online presence. So with our process, we do have tonight, we are focusing on the recommended LUCA. So we will be presenting a new recommended approach to tree retention with development, as well as presenting the Planning Commission regulation, recommendation. Our second study session on June 18th, we will be presenting staff's recommendation for city code amendments. As the city code is outside of the Planning Commission's purview, the city, the council will be reviewing these amendments for the first time. These concern tree removal and replacement outside of development, as well as our enforcement provisions. So now, on to the recommended LUCA itself. A couple impactful, high-impact definitions here. We are proposing updates to our definitions for significant and landmark trees. First, so currently, significant trees are defined as trees eight inches in diameter or greater. This is important because these are the trees that are subject to our regulations. Smaller trees do not come into our regulations for retention. We are recommending a reduced six-inch diameter to be more consistent with our neighbors in the region. We also are bringing in a definition for landmark trees into the permanent code. Currently, we have an interim ordinance in place establishing our landmark tree definition. This will codify that 24-inch diameter. We also have brought in some additional detail. So we have provided some alternate smaller diameters for select slow-growing species that are high-quality native trees, for example, madronas, can achieve landmark status at a smaller diameter size, so they get maximum credit for the retention system. In addition, alders and cottonwood trees are not eligible for landmark status. So now pivoting to the tree retention system itself. So first, a bit of high-level background. Tree retention is the process that we use to identify existing significant and landmark trees which cannot be removed with development. And in Bellevue, these requirements are imposed with any decision that includes development, including changes in lot coverage or changes in the parking area. So these require, these regulations are brought in as part of that So first, I will provide some explanation of our current approach and why we're recommending a change. So under our current tree retention approach, our regulations apply to significant trees that are in place when the permit is reviewed. So we don't have authority to look backward for those cases where a site has been cleared, and we, there's a natural incentive to remove trees in advance when possible. So in addition, for those trees that are in place when we receive that permit application, applicants must retain a percentage of the total diameter inches of existing significant trees. That means there's no minimum outside of bridle trails. So when we have proposals that have very few trees, there will be a very limited retention requirement. We don't have the authority to require planting unless certain landscaping requirements apply. And for those sites that are more heavily forested, there's more limited flexibility. So we'll walk through an example. This is a cartoonized version of a real example of a site in Bellevue that was redeveloped with single-family housing. So this site comes from one of our R3.5 land use districts. It was developed for single-family housing. So here we see the site has four trees. If you total up the diameter inches, it's currently at 84 inches. And so this applicant would have to retain at least 25 diameter inches. So after development, they maintained two of the four trees, resulting in retention above that 25-inch minimum. And but again, if you consider if they had come in with one tree or two trees, it would be a lower requirement. So we don't get that consistency from new development across over time. So now, on to the new system that we are recommending, which is a minimum tree density credit approach. So under this alternative approach, instead of having a percentage of whatever's in place, instead, the applicant has to provide a set minimum number of tree credits. These credits do not respond to the trees in place. Instead, the rate that's applied depends on the size of the lot, the type of development being proposed, and the land use district. So that rate scales. So we have the highest expectation for single-family development in an R1 land use district, for example. And then it is significantly lower in our commercial, commercial districts. That minimum tree credit can be achieved through both retention and planting. And the credits that are provided by retaining trees are determined based on the diameter of the tree. So larger trees provide more credits, ranging up to 10. So if you retain a landmark tree, you get 10 credits. Or down to if you retain a six-inch tree, you get two credits. And new plantings provide one credit. So currently, we do have exceptions in our tree retention requirements for downtown and east Maine. Those districts instead have a green factor approach that's more tailored to the highly urban environment. We are recommending maintaining that exception. So now walking through a comparison of what this looks like under our proposed update. This is the same site. So instead of looking at the inches of the trees, based on its size and district, this site, this applicant would have to provide 20 tree credits, again, based on the size of the lot, the land use district, and that this is a proposal for single-family development. So there are multiple pathways to providing those 20 credits. If they had removed additional trees, they would be required to plant. But say if that 10-credit tree were removed, that would be 10 credits they'd have to provide either by planting at one per credit or if they could demonstrate that, that planting can't be accommodated by implementing our in lieu fee option. But in this scenario, we'd see the site retaining one additional tree over what have been, what would have been required under our current system. So acknowledging that not every, the alignment of trees on sites and the specifics of development does vary, we have recommended implementing some limited development regulation flexibility to help projects accommodate tree retention standards. So we have implemented limited flexibility for first, required parking, specifically for required parking, to demonstrate that by removing some portion of the required surface parking, that the applicant could retain additional landmark or grove trees beyond the minimum required. So there, that reduced parking would be tied to better outcomes for trees. We have also provided flexibility for front and rear yards, allowing projects to extend up to 50% into the front setback, required setback, or five feet into the required rear setback in a couple circumstances. So either if it's required in order to accommodate their, their maximum lot density, that this is an option for them to use, or if it's affordable housing, which will be exceeding the minimum tree density. Under similar conditions, we've also made available, at the Planning Commission's direction, an additional 12 feet of building height. We have limited that from single-family home proposals, acknowledging that we have received a lot of comments about the scale of single-family homes, and they will not be as constrained in needing to have that additional height in order to accommodate a home, and that that front rear yard setback flexibility is still available. Specifically for those cases, when flexibility is granted in exchange for preserving certain trees, we would require a tree protection covenant. That is not for every project, and it's not for every tree. It is specifically in exchange for those trees that were preserved in order to be granted development flexibility, to help make sure that public benefit gets So now, a bit more on new plantings. So as we touched on before, each newly planted tree, meeting our standards, earns one credit. There is no credit for planting new alders and cottonwoods. In those cases, when the applicant can demonstrate that all planting options have been exhausted, we have a new fee in lieu that would be available. We will be bringing forward that fee with the city code amendment. It will be around $1,300 per tree, to be adjusted with inflation over time. In addition, we do provide for four applicants that have low canopy to begin with, so potentially sites that perhaps have been cleared in advance of development. We have the authority for a three-year look-back on recent tree removal. And if there has been tree removal within those three years, we can require replanting at one per significant tree or two per landmark tree, potentially even over their minimum tree requirement. In addition, specifically for those projects that have to plant to achieve the minimum density, again, not for every project, specifically in that case, we have the authority to require a three-year maintenance assurance device to help support the establishment of those new tree plantings. It's a similar approach to what we use in critical areas when new plantings are required. So now, I will pass to Vice Chair Gopel to provide the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. The Planning Commission reviewed this LUCA in three study sessions on December 13th, January 24th, and March 27th. The Commission held a public hearing on April 24th before making this recommendation to you. The Planning Commission heard many comments from community members and interested parties, and they largely mirrored some of the ones that you heard this evening. Most commentators supported the LUCA's enhanced tree protections and enforcement. There was strong support for the outreach process that the, that the department staff did. And I wanted to also just thank overall the, the great work that the department staff did on this LUCA as well. Some of the concerns that were raised by commentators really fell into four categories. The first was ensuring adequate flexibility for development to meet housing goals. The second was the need to give developers sufficient clarity and predictability on outcomes when they submit an application, and to limit departmental discretion. The third was limiting costs to property owners. And fourth was supporting middle housing types. And this last concern was one where the Commission in particular had a recommendation, which was to relook at the minimum tree credit system when housing code amendments are developed to ensure that tree regulations can support new housing types not yet established in the code, something that will happen, for example, when the city begins to look at how to deal with things like state House Bill 1110 and the new ADU, DAdu requirements under Washington state law. So that was the one additional recommendation that we had in addition to approval of the LUCA. The, the Planning Commission found that the LUCA meets the decision criteria under land use code 20.30J.135, and it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. It enhances the public safety and welfare. It is not contrary to the best interests of the citizens and property owners of the city of Bellevue. Therefore, the Planning Commission recommended by unanimous vote that the city council adopt the land use code amendment. This recommendation's included in your planning commission resolution, in a planning commission resolution as attachment A in your packet. And that's all. Thank you.
So back to our LUCA process for a recap. This work was initiated back in November 2022. We launched a broad outreach process early in 2023. We launched a broad outreach process early in 2023 and held a public, our first public information session last June to gather input on the scope of the project. From that point forward, we transitioned into developing the proposal and held our first study session with the Planning Commission on December 13th. On January 10th, we held a work session with the Bellevue Development Committee. And on January 11th, we held a public, a second public information session, incorporating input from our technical consultant. And I didn't have a chance to mention this earlier in the presentation, but I do want to note there was a comment in the public comments where one of my previous comments was taken out of context. So there was a question during the Planning Commission's review about our technical consultant analysis and the scope of that work. And so I did respond specific to the scope of that specific study, that that technical consultant, we retained at an environmental consulting firm to advise on technical considerations for trees, such as defining hazardous trees, defining significant trees, and considerations for implementing tree regulations in the code. The scope of that work did not include housing, but that is not to say we did not consider housing impacts. We have been working on considering housing impacts throughout this work. My comment was specific to that technical report. So with that out of the way, we had a second study session with the Planning Commission in January. Third, in March, we held our public hearing with the Planning Commission on April 24th, whereas Vice Chair Gopel shared, they provided the recommendation to adopt. So this evening, this is our first study session with council on the Luca component. We do have a second study session scheduled for June 18th on the city code and any follow-up that we might have tonight that we can cover there as well. Following that, we would move on to action on the two ordinances at a future date. So finally, again, the direction that we're seeking this evening is for council to direct staff to finalize the Luca ordinance for final action at a future meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. So Deputy Mayor, let's start with you.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I wanted to start with my deep, deep gratitude to our amazing staff, our Planning Commission, and the entire Bellevue community for this outstanding engagement on this very important issue. So thank you so much. A big thanks, a special one goes to the Planning Commission. Your incredible contribution to this Luca is over a year and a half, maybe two years almost, is amazing. So thank you so much. You had three, as you mentioned, Vice Chair, in-depth study session and then one public hearing. More than 20 oral communication, that as you mentioned, majority of them were supportive. And there were some concerns, as we heard today, from some of the stakeholders. But the interesting thing was, even when we heard today those concerns, they appreciate the staff, they appreciate the engagement. So that's something that is really amazed, make, make, make me amazed that although there were concerns and a disagreement in some of the flexibility or some of those stuff, but they still appreciate the thoughtful work and inclusive engagement process that you have. So again, congratulations to all of you. I am a fan of minimum tree density credit approach. I think this, overall, this Luca strikes the right balance by providing flexibility and predictability where appropriate, while also discouraging excessive lot clearing before any development and incentivize tree retention. I believe the intent to balance these competing goals of development and tree preservation has been achieved or we are very close to achieve. I would love to hear my fellow council members' opinion. Before, but before we go to other council members, I have two questions. One is the clarity of the code that we heard today and when I was reading the package, I had that too. There are several areas where the Luca leaves discretion and decision up to the director discretion. And I understand the rationale for this. I think there is some flexibility because the flexibility and the predictability sometimes compete with each other. So there are some site specification consideration and some, we want to have some creative solutions. So when I read that, I thought those directors discretion is to help more, for more housing, is to help in a specific cases that we cannot be very black and white. We have some input that a director has. But by saying that, there are going to be subjectives, opinions. So I am really curious to hear, especially maybe if Vice Chair can chime in. In the Planning Commission deliberation, I wanted to know what was some of the concerns? Have you addressed any of them? Have you discussed that? So that's one question that I have. The second is the housing impact that we also heard. Do you see if there is, what negative impact on the housing and development you see? If we go with this? And what was some of the comments that you heard or you studied that you can help us to understand the negative impact on the housing?
Sure. Well, first on the discretion, do you want to kick off the response?
I'll start. It's a great question. And, you know, we, we didn't discuss in a lot of detail at the Planning Commission this, this issue, but I can tell you how, how I myself got, got comfortable on this. Because I think when you, when you think about trying to create a flexible system like this credit system is, you, almost built into that and necessary is an element of discretion, is an element of trust that you have to put into it. And it doesn't lend itself to a mechanistic approach to trying to address every, every conceivable, every conceivable situation to give people absolute certainty upfront. So I think the flexibility requires that discretionary element. The second point that I would make, just by analogy to, to what I do in my, my day job, is if people have questions typically in these kinds of things, they will look at pre-application engagement with the regulator. I do this all the time with the state, with the federal government. And that would be a way to gain that kind of certainty if people were in doubt. So with that, I'll, I'll turn that over to staff.
Yeah, thank you. So you put that really well with, one of the biggest challenges we've had with this project is we've gotten the guidance that we need to make things predictable and clear from the outset, yet we also need to incorporate site-specific considerations. So there's a fundamental challenge there in developing objective standards. A couple notes I would add. I will say the amount of discretion in the code is overstated in many cases. I will note, there's one section that's often referenced, which are our priorities for retention. So this is very similar to a section we have today in our code, almost the same exact language saying that the director shall consider the preservation of the following types of trees in a priority order. But these, this section is intended as a guideline to provide our priorities for retention. It is not intended to trump our minimum tree credit approach. So for example, we say prioritize landmark trees first. But that is not to say you must retain all landmark trees even above your retention standards, or that say it couldn't be a better outcome for your project to retain a group of significant trees instead of perhaps an ailing landmark tree that's in a location that won't work well after development. So we have, we already have guidelines like this in our code today, but the ones we have right now are very vague. They encourage retaining trees that provide skyline features and things like that. Instead, we now have much more discrete guidance. But it is, again, it is guidance, it is not a requirement. So that's been one area of confusion. I'd also note when it comes to discretion, so in a lot of, some other cities that have implemented minimum tree credit systems, there are a lot of additional limits on significant and landmark tree removal and additional replanting standards that apply, even on top of the minimum tree credit approach. So here, we have taken an approach that's more, I'd say like a no hidden fees kind of take in that we are more reliant on that minimum tree credit and that ratio for providing the amount of trees on the site. It's not going to be as responsive to the trees that are there. So that was a choice we made. So a couple points on discretion, but I think this is also going to be one of those areas where ultimately, I think, we're always going to agree to disagree. We believe we have a good balance. When it comes to housing, housing impacts, we looked at that in a couple ways. So we did test the ratios that we were proposing against development that we've been seeing in Bellevue. We implemented a reduced ratio in our residential districts for multifamily housing and other uses to help accommodate those. We have also eliminated a number of regulations we have now that are particularly challenging. So in our code today, we have additional limits on tree removal around the perimeters of sites, which we have more flexibility now to select the trees for retention that are most appropriate for the project and the site conditions, which we see as an improvement in flexibility. We do also now have an in-lu fee option available as a last resort, which we do acknowledge, you know, those are costs that are tacked to development. But it's also an additional area of flexibility, and it is also an option that has been supported by the development community. So while we can't guarantee there won't be housing impacts, we have been testing our proposal consistently to make sure that development can still proceed and trying to keep it as limited as possible in terms of impacts that way.
Appreciate the very comprehensive responses. Thank you so much, both.
Great. Council members on?
Yes, thank you. I, I really appreciate all of the work over, really, a year and a half. And I would say even prior to that, we were hearing a lot and suggestions from the community as well. And so this has been several years in the making. And as I read through the packet and all of the comments, I can really appreciate the amount of trying to thread a needle between tree preservation and still the ability to develop housing and realizing that the last, the, the code was written over 40 years ago, and a lot has happened in Bellevue since then. So I really appreciate this. When I was listening to the comments, what I kept thinking about is, you know, the, the piece around predictability and flexibility, even though it seems like it's the two edges of the coin. Really, I think what they're, what we're asking or what I, we're hearing is that it's not so much that we're concerned with flexibility, so much as that we just want the, the predictability or the director's discretion to be consistent. You know, it seems to me that when we look at this really kind of complicated formula for tree credits, that, you know, my sense is what is being requested is, okay, we can start to get some predictability if, as you make decisions on your discretion, there's consistency in, in interpretation of the code that's fair. And my sense is maybe that would be as we adopt this code and we start to see how it works, getting a sense for where some of those discretion lands in consistent spaces, that maybe those then come back and as a update where if the discretion always goes this way, then maybe we just need to put it in as code instead of leaving it really flexible. But my sense is that this is new enough to us to have this credit system, which we're hearing from the development community. They like this credit system. We're hearing from the, our community that they also like this system. So to me, actually, that, that part is a win-win, right? That we, we may not completely agree with all the little nuances, but in general, we agree with that. So I appreciate this. I'm prepared to, you know, support this with that caveat that we heard, which is reviewing the code as we then look at, we're going to adopt the comp plan, then we're going to look at the, the effects of 1110 and middle housing. And at that point, coming back and just taking, and taking a look at where we are, what we've learned since then, and what tweaks we might need to make as a result of that. So that makes sense to me. Instead of trying to predict where we're going to land after we finish the 1110 work, because we, we won't be done with that until another year from now when the 1110 work is going to be done. So this will give us a, a year of information and data about how things are going. So I, I am really appreciative of that. I will say that when I read this, what I didn't realize is planting invasive and noxious species is prohibited. I wonder if my neighbors understand that? Or whether we even understand sometimes what are species that are invasive and noxious? Because sometimes I don't know that we know the difference. So maybe part of this then is, you know, as we adopt this, what kind of education we're going to be providing the community? Because I can imagine that there will be homeowners that will inadvertently violate these rules, not understanding that the rules that the city has has changed. So I, I don't know that it's part of this direction, but I do think we need to, as we roll this out, have a plan for how we communicate and educate. Thanks.
Okay, great. Council member Hamilton?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all the work that has been done. I mean, just looking at this process here, it's really impressive. So certainly appreciate the Planning Commission and the staff and everybody who's been involved in all of the public engagement. I mean, the meetings, the study sessions, getting the recommendation today, the hearing you held, over 650 responses to the online questionnaire. We don't always get the luxury of having so much information given to us. You know, I think as I look at this, it just, these changes seem very reasonable. I think supporting some, a couple of really critical goals for us, combating climate change, adding housing, to be able to accomplish both of those at the same time, I think that's not easy. I think you've really done a good job here. I also think too, just the fact that, you know, we've done really well on achieving a tree canopy, our 40% tree canopy. I think that, that's commendable, that's a, a real challenge. And I think, you know, kind of before moving on to some of these next steps, it's important to acknowledge that. And I think there's a lot of support for continuing to ratchet up those goals. So I think that's great. I think this is a policy that we should just feel good about. And there's nothing wrong with feeling good about a policy. I mean, I enjoy getting worked up about things as much as the next person, but it's not really possible here. I think that, you know, this is really good work and, and we can come together on this. I think the flexibility that's been built in, especially when we're focusing on affordable housing, I think that's great. Including a requirement to record a covenant prohibiting development within any portion of any tree protection zone, that's great. Let's just cast that in stone. So I appreciate that. I have a few questions for you. Just kind of looking, you know, we look at these sites overall and in part of the agenda memo, you talk about the tree canopy site area and what, and what that is. And after removing critical areas, shoreline vegetation, conservation areas, and their buffers. And, you know, it's noted that those, there's regulations for those in other areas. But I just wonder if, you know, the goal of the Luca is to require each site to maintain tree canopy to kind of fit in the city's overall goals? You know, why we would remove that if, if the site kind of accomplishes what we're looking for? And, and I think I'm especially concerned about that when it relates to affordable housing. So could you just talk about that briefly?
Yeah, sure. So we, as you noted, we do have separate regulations that apply for trees in our critical areas and our shorelines. We maintain that those regulations are geared towards specifically maintaining the function of those environmentally sensitive areas. So we do recommend setting them apart in that regard. The ratios that we've, or The ratios that we've, or the rates, rather, that we have defined for minimum tree credits are with the intent of considering trees incorporated within urban development, so not within the critical area context. So those critical areas and shorelines that have separate regulations, they are removed from the tree canopy site area. So while you're not getting credit for retaining those trees, you are also not being provided to account for the area those trees are in in your calculation. So we have kind of a credit rate designed for urban development applied to the area where that more urban development is happening. And so that's the general concept. What we have seen in the past, because today, trees in critical areas can count towards your tree retention, and what we see happen is that you'll have a site that, say, backs onto a ravine, and we have all the trees that are retained in the ravine, and the rest of the site can then be cleared. And so we got a lot of comments, concerns from community members who would like to see more dispersion of trees around those sites, not just isolated in those pockets.
Okay. I think that the question maybe just reflects my concern overall about affordable housing. So maybe still a little bit nervous, but I'll accept that. Also too, we have, you know, I think what's important too is that the code be really clear, and did it be clear for folks who are not necessarily professionals? And I wonder, we have this diameter at breast height, which, you know, I mean, it sounds a little outdated, that's kind of a weird term, I think. And I'm just wondering if maybe we could attach, like, a little bit of an explanation to that, like, four and a half feet? I mean, if we're talking about four and a half feet, I just think it might be, like, a little easier if we just say four and a half feet or somehow, like, hook that on to the end of DBH. So I would just like to throw that out there. I just know in going through a project myself, I've actually kind of looked at some of the code and, you know, tried to figure it out so that I can work with the folks that are helping me out. So I would just like to suggest that we add something on to DBH. And then too, you kind of touched on this, but I'm hoping you could give me a little bit more of an explanation in talking about significant trees and, you know, only can be removed if the maximum density on the site cannot be achieved without extending into the tree protection zone. And you talked a little bit about this, but how do we know, what's the criteria? How do you go through that? What's the process in determining, like, maximum density? Because, I mean, kind of where there's a will, there's a way. So if you want to, you could, you know, possibly configure it. But if you're looking at, you know, what it takes to achieve that, and, you know, is it reasonable versus kind of desirable? But could you just talk about, you know, what, how do you calculate the maximum, whether that's achievable or the developer's achieving that?
Yeah, thank you for that. So yeah, that is one of the areas we've received a lot of comments. So where this came from, Kirkland implemented a development assurance statement that provides for ensuring maximum, maximum density, maximum FAR, maximum lot coverage, among some other specifics. And this was recommended by the master builders and others. We looked at that regulation and felt that we do have a lot of flexibility in place that can anticipate the needs of the vast majority of projects. We were not willing to go so far as guaranteeing absolute 100% achievement of your lot coverage and other very specific standards due to tree regulations alone. We felt that in putting forward maximum density, that this is about getting at, you can achieve a project that is functionally consistent with the zoning of that district. But we do acknowledge that this could be perceived as a bit of a gray area in saying, you know, what is the minimum? The challenge we have is that no matter where, we can pick a percentage, as some cities do, to say, you know, if it's 80% of your lot coverage, then you're there. We feel even setting that kind of a bright line is a little too hard in not considering the specifics of the site. We don't provide such guarantees for other regulations in our code. So we've, you know, we acknowledge that that could be an opportunity for disagreement, but we also note that there is a lot of flexibility built into the code. We do have the fee-in-loe option available as a last resort. Yeah, Nick, I don't know if you'd have anything else there?
Okay. Also too, just was kind of curious, I know the Basis Independent Schools, they sent us a letter, and I know we haven't had it very long. I know that you did have some kind of a response for it, which I think is great. And so as it applies to that specific case, you know, that, I didn't really have a chance to see it, but I assume that it's reasonable. But I'm just curious if you might kind of talk about the issues that were raised in that letter, and so that other folks who are not going to be receiving that letter might have a little bit of better understanding of kind of how that goes.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. So we received a letter, and council received a letter yesterday on behalf of a private school that is looking to propose a development for a private school in one of our 1.8 land use districts. We were aware of this project in the general sense, and their attorney had shared with us that there may be concerns several weeks, if not months ago. We have always responded that we would love to consider the specifics of that proposal. Unfortunately, we didn't receive any specifics of where the areas of concern were until yesterday. And so we have received more information, which is great. I think this specific proposal is illustrating, it's an exceptional case. I think it's an exceptional case that we can look at some tweaks to accommodate. So I'll explain how. So this is one of our large lot, single-family residential districts. So the minimum tree credits that we have defined there are with that in mind. So this is a proposal for a two-acre school. As it stands, they're going to be challenged to accommodate our minimum tree credits on their site while providing for all the things the school requires, parking, et cetera. So again, and we did look at, based on a high-level view of their proposal, if they were in an R3.5 district or anything more intense than that, their proposal would work with what we're providing. It is both an unusual use in the area, and it is that specific large lot, single-family district. However, you know, we do have ways that we could look at incorporating some considerations there for uses like school, pointing to, for example, our minimums by use in our non-residential districts could be a path, or defining some lower ratio for uses like that in our residential districts. So do acknowledge it's an outlier. I will say, part of that letter also took issue with the flawed interpretation of some limits we have on significant tree removal for sites below the minimum. So because we do provide flexibility for projects to select whether to replant or retain trees provided at the beginning, they're above their minimum tree credits, we do want, we did want to provide some greater certainty. So in the code, we have built in a provision that if an application comes in below the minimum, for example, if they've cleared recently, that we want to see some additional justification for why any existing significant or landmark trees must be removed, such as if it's necessary to provide for the development, or if a qualified tree professional, which is now a defined term, provides guidance that they recommend removing that tree. So it's not about restricting tree removal entirely and banning them from using the planting option. It is just about seeing some justification in those cases where the canopy is on the lower side. So there's a bit there on interpretation of the code, but we do also acknowledge this is an unusual case, but we've received it now, so we can look at addressing it.
Well, good. And I think just your response and the fact that it was so timely, that's a really good example of flexibility and discretion. And I think when I think about that, my thought is that the intent of that discretion, that flexibility is to help the project to move forward, and here we have an example from just yesterday, in my mind at least, that does just that. So I think that that's great. I think you've really done a great job here, really appreciate it. It's a good process, spent a ton of time with stakeholders. So I think, as some of my colleagues have said, I think this is a job well done, and I'm certainly ready to see it come back and support it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you. This has actually been a very, I'm glad I was not going first, this has been a good listen to this and looking at some of the things that are going on. I think that all my colleagues have said things that I agree on, on this. I think we're doing something we, we can go back and say we should have done a long time ago, a lot of those kind of things, but we're here. And I think it's a really, really good job. Part of me and part I know of some of us would want to say, okay, let's do this tonight, right now. But you're, what my understanding is that we're there, but there are things you want that we need to have before we actually make an official decision on it, right? Just to get it all put together. But we're, I think we're in really agreement that this is really a good piece put together, and it's something we've been working on for a long time, and probably looking back on it better than we thought we can get to it in a certain way, because it is complex. So just on voting, you know, tonight saying, okay, we really like this, we want to get this put in place, there's some things you're working on with it, and you'll come back next time, and then we'll get it done. I think that's what we're, what you're asking for.
At a future meeting.
At a future meeting.
So at the next meeting, we will also be bringing forward some amendments to the city code.
That helps us a lot.
Yeah, and so we would recommend, you know, considering those two as a package, because ideally, they should be adopted together. So we could be ready to adopt both at the next meeting, but otherwise, we had planned for July decision on both. But the decision tonight would be whether to advance with this ordinance.
Okay. Well, I, as I said, I agree with my councilmembers, we've already spoken on this, and I think we're all in really agreement on this, and it's a really good job you've done. And I think one of the things to look at that gives us a little more time to think about this is, are there, are there really core issues with developers or MBA or others or not? And how can we, I think, I think we're going to address all this. In fact, I think they're a lot more addressed than maybe people think about it. But I think that would be, it gives us a little time to work on that too, because we need to be, all of us be working together. And it sounds to me like this has been very helpful to have, to talk about how we approach this and what the certainties are, what the things are we have to work on, and the goal all of us put together. And this really helps to have both the developers and the homeowners and the city and people who need housing all want the same thing. And the tree thing should not be a stumbling block for any of those. It should be something that really helps all of those pieces. And I think we can, I think you're all, we're on the cusp of really doing that. I don't want to ask you a lot of questions about this and that and whatever, and give you my philosophy on it, but what I think right now is, I really, really appreciate this, it's a really good job. And, you know, if there are issues that we still need to work with the community on, we can do that. But what you're saying is you'll come back, you'll put this together, deal with some of the language and things you're working on. And I think it's really a good idea to come back with the BCCA thing at the same time. And let's get this, get this in place, because there are people who get these two confused also. And we've been saying we want to get a comprehensive tree program in place, and now's the time to do it. And so come back in a couple of months, and we can get that done.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Senator Mayor. Well, you are a good example and good model of what people think that what Bellevue is very unique in our customer service to people, because you always are flexible, and you make the code. You know, when you say all the things that in your description, not once you've hit all, right tree, right place, data, you know, all the right words that is the policy that we make. So you make it easy for councilmembers to make policies. Unfortunately, not unfortunately, but the reality is, I always say that devil is in the detail. So when you implement it, that's the key, right? So when implemented, if you, it's easy, if you have a real tight rule, no flexibility, just say this one, one, two, three. And so people, you know, you don't have to worry about it, just implement that way. But then it's not customer-friendly, because you don't know what the environment is like. You don't know what particular details could be. We don't know that, because you're going to do data, you're going to collect it, and you don't know what the situation is. That's why we hear people from master builders, we have some contractors. I think they brought real concerns, because they're looking for cut, cut it dry, right? But it doesn't work for everybody. So I think Bellevue really is a very great model for customer service, it's by none. But I've been around for a long time, 30 years, so I've seen a lot of challenges you guys face, staff, every day they face, right? People say, gee, today you tell me you can do that, tomorrow, maybe there's some deviation. Somebody else did this, how come we cannot do that? But it's the right thing to do, right? And that's why people like it. People love to work with you guys. But at the same time, it could be, could create conflict. So the question, I really appreciate what Deputy Mayor asked, when you're in a situation, when you have a conflict, okay? Especially if the conflict is based on value proposition, because sometimes you leave it open. You know, we're talking about, in this case specifically, housing and climate change, right? And tree people and housing people, right? We want, we support both. It's easy for council to say, we support both. You guys take care of it, right? We pass the buck to you. But I think that's where the challenge is. I think we need to be prepared to get more data, more specifics upfront, if we can. But it doesn't mean that we cannot go ahead and provide the policy which we support. Okay, the question is, talk to the people who have some concerns and work with them, and then be able to do whatever you can, but at the same time, I know you guys can, be prepared for the flexibility. And so I commend you, I always do. Our staff is amazing. I mean, it's a lot easier for you to just say one plus one, two, that's it. But you're willing to take on this kind of thing, because ultimately, it's the judge, the value you have to use, the judgment. Do we want more housing? What if by preserving more trees, you're going to have less housing? Ah, that's the dilemma. What do you do? You come to us, right? But it's much better to be prepared and know beforehand than you, than not, that's all. But that's what you can do. So I believe that. Think about what if there's a conflict? How do you resolve it? It's going to be based on certain values. So you need to continuously talking to us. You can, you have to continuously talk to the public, right? So that you know, you can prepare for it. If something happens, otherwise, you know, you're going to say, gee, what do we do? Are you going to offend some people? Some people say, gee, you tell this one, and somebody else says, well, I know this is the case, how come I, you treat me differently, right? So it could backfire. So, but I think we do a good job. I want to make sure, this is a tough one, because we're depending on HB 1110. And that's another factor, which is in the value that's imposed on us from the outside, you know? When else, when this ended, what's going to happen, right? And we have a rule, we have a code. So I think that's important to realize or adapt, and don't be too self, to be too confident. I know you guys are not, because the people will be pushing you. So I think we need to, I heard from the, oh, I forgot to mention one thing, I appreciate the planning commission, vice chair, thank you. I heard him say, you know, they didn't really spend that much time talking about the details, which is not possible, right? But it's important to provide, you know, the value that we support, and we want to make sure that you also support the public's potential interest and flexibility, and how do you prepare for those challenges, the events when they happen? So I think we need to make sure that, I'm going to ask you a question, what is the assurance? I think that's, Deputy Mayor also asked that. What's assurance of all the things we have articulated, we talk about?
Maybe you can comment on the, whether or not you did pay attention to the details?
Yes, yes.
If you could clarify that.
Make sure you, you say, oh, I was just talking about housing, that's it. Oh, we're just talking about trees, that's it. What, 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 do you hear both?
Yeah.
Do you know how to balance it? When, how to come back and check with us, check with the commission, check with the public, that's very important.
Yeah, so this has been a process of more than two years. So we've incorporated So we've incorporated feedback from lots of different stakeholder groups, we had a technical report, we've had analysis from all of our different internal staff who work with our code, and understand how we implement our code. So there's a lot of detailed review that is happening behind the scenes, and how we developed and tested this code, that we don't always see in our commission and council meetings. And I think you also made some comments kind of about continuous improvement as our, of our codes, and that's one of our standard practices, you know, as we go along and we find issues, we do keep track of those and look for opportunities to update them. And as the Vice Chair noted, we already have planned within our scope for 1110 implementation, that we will be looking at our tree retention standards to make sure we're making updates that are needed to incorporate more of those Plex housing types, detached ADUs, that we will be incorporating. So, does, does that help?
Yes, absolutely. This is the process. But I have, just final one question. How do we, well, housing production is one goal, right? Do we know, somebody actually asked that question, what is the housing goal we're setting? What's the housing production we're looking at? Okay, that's one, that's a goal. And we have to ask, what's the, how many trees we're under, we know 40%, but like, if we have any number, data, data, data. And if we have data, let's figure out, are they in conflict? Then we've got to figure out how we're not, we're not going to be conflict. If they support each other, you got the answer, right? So I think that's the kind of thing, we need to make sure that the staff will continue. You don't have the data yet, you're not complete, you're just going through the process, right? So you don't know, again, what's the reality? How, are we already meeting the tree code? How far, I don't know, but we would know when you move into the process, and then we can have some idea, you know, what else you have to do, how far off flexible, how much more do we do one way or the other. So I think it's just, tho, those are the things I, I feel that, you know, we need to keep in mind, and I hope that, I'm sure you do, and we'll be hoping to get input from you, data, so that we can continue, continue to be flexible, and to be customer friendly, to serve the public as much as we can, and all the public, you know, with those two objectives in mind. There may be others involved, too. We can actually, city can say, well, this maybe can influence something else, and maybe we can do something. So, that's the end of my conversation.
Thank you.
So I, I support moving ahead, but be prepared first, is to talk to the contractors, talk to master builders, talk to other people.
I believe they've already done that.
Yeah.
Well, the, the questions still asked.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, please.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just going to supplement on one point, if I could, in answer to your question, because at the Planning Commission level, we actually did look at a lot of things in depth here. I mean, we analyzed the strikeout draft, and we, we focused on a lot of the details. My one comment about, you know, was about how we didn't have a lot of discussion about this dichotomy between predictability versus department discretion. I, I think that was because we all liked the flexible model that this creates, and the fact that it's able to accommodate site-specific conditions. And so, there wasn't really a debate to be had about that issue. So I, I just wanted to clarify that we, we, we did actually go in depth, but it wasn't really a point of contention as amongst the Planning Commission, which is why we didn't have a discussion about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that clarification, and I think that I'm going to make some comments that are complimentary to Councilmember Lee's. But first of all, I just want to thank you all for all the work that you've done on this, this is excellent work, and I really appreciate it. Christina, I know that you've put a lot of time into this, and I appreciate that, and Deputy Mayor, you've done a lot as liaison to the Planning Commission. I really appreciate that there's a three-year look back on a property's tree cutting, I think that's very meaningful, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate that, and I'd like you to kind of explain a little more about, we, we will be revisiting these codes when they, when we go, start looking at them as permanent land use code amendments, right? Or when we do the comp plan, at what point can, do we revisit these in a way?
So, they're, once adopted, we would see this as, well, kind of over time, we always look for issues that come up in the code, and ways that we can fix things, either through one of our cleanup amendments, or when we have kind of related projects coming through, there's an opportunity to tack on updates there. So 1110, for example, we see is the next opportunity where we would definitely look to incorporate updates. But, you know, we have flexibility on when we can look into the code over time.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, that's good. I think it's really important to make it easy for the property owner to know which trees should be planted and where, you referenced that, and so just having something, a, a site that makes that really obvious for them, I think will be helpful. I like the flexibility, I like you can do the fee and lieu, you can do off-site planting, and there are innovative mitigation plans, working with you, that can provide more flexibility, which is great. My question, I have two. One, can you explain how this flexibility can apply when there's affordable housing involved? And my second question is, how do you expect the proposed tree codes to impact housing development? Because we've heard that in the public comment quite a bit, so.
Yeah, so there's, right now, we have more limited flexibility in addition for affordable housing, so specifically for those options that provide flexibility for required front and rear yards, and the additional building height. For market rate projects, that is available either if they can demonstrate they can't achieve their density without removing additional trees. Affordable housing projects that are exceeding their minimum credits have that, that flexibility available to them at the outset. So, that's a couple places where affordable housing comes in now. Again, it's, it's hard to predict housing production. We believe that what we've set up is flexible, but we do acknowledge it's a new system, and we will be observing impacts on development as they come in, and looking to see if there are changes we might need to incorporate.
So when do you think you can come back and give us an update? Like, is six months too soon, maybe?
I think, yeah, I think six months might be a little soon, just anticipating that, you know, if we take action in July, we, that's when proposals that come in following that point would be subject to the new regulations. So we're likely not going to see many large projects that are, have actually gone through and removed trees by that point. We do tend to see most tree removal happening more in the springtime, either way. So we'd say, I mean, 1110 implementation will be a great opportunity to look back. We're going to be bringing that code forward to be adopted by June of next year, so we'll be able to report back on our experience to date by then.
Terrific.
Yeah.
You've answered all my questions. Is this something you could take offline?
No, regarding what you're asking.
Okay.
I am, I want to follow up on the flexibility.
Your mic's off.
Oh, sorry. I'd like to follow up on the flexibility thing. I think we talked about earlier today, about 12 feet high, and also the front yard, you know, space. I think the time you probably should check back with us, maybe when the first situation happens, when there's probably public questions about it, you know, because there's a, well, suddenly, you know, the, the building or in their neighborhood, you know, can go up 12 feet, you know? We need to know whether it creates some problem, whether it's appropriate for that particular, you know, permission, permit, that's all. Or if, that's it, that's all.
Thank you for your input on that.
We don't want it to ever happen, then we.
I don't know that that's council input, but that's one council member's input, that's very valuable.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, is there a motion?
I move to direct staff to finalize the land use code amendment ordinance for final action at future meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, why don't we resume at 8:15, please? Ms. Carlson, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, Mayor, Council. So we have Bianca Siegel back at the staff table, and she's joined by Bellevue Police Captain Robert Spingler. And as we approached the first year of shelter operations and housing operations at the East Gate Housing Campus, we thought it was timely to provide an overview of what's happening at the three projects. That's Porchlight's Men's Shelter, Plymouth Crossing Permanent Supportive Housing, and the Polaris at East Gate Workforce Housing. We also have a few representatives from some of the organizations at the campus in the audience today, so just acknowledge that they are here, and Bianca will probably introduce them. And with that, I will hand it over to Bianca.
Thank you. Good evening again. So, yeah, we're really happy to be here, almost a year since the launch of operations at the East Gate site, to share some updates with you all. And, yes, it worked, okay. This is information only, and we are going to give you a little bit of background on just some reminders about the history of the development on the site and the city's involvement. We'll talk about what's been happening at the Porchlight Men's Shelter, and Plymouth Crossing Permanent Supportive Housing, and Polaris Affordable Apartments. And then Captain Spingler will also share some information related to public safety and community in the area. So, starting with the background, the, you know, the creation of, of the permanent men's shelter in the city, as you know, has been a longtime city priority, and was a multi-year process, right, to engage in the community, identify potential sites, working with King County and the others, involve land use code updates, a good neighbor agreement process for the shelter specifically to address community feedback. The site is large enough that it required, and, and sort of led to the partnership among these three entities to fully use the, the potential area. And the result is that it's really addressing, the three organizations are really addressing a pretty wide spectrum of services that are needed in the community, and created some unique partnership opportunities there. We are anticipating altogether that somewhere between 1,500 and 2,000 community members will find shelter or housing here, and, and again, serving some critical needs in the community. So the Porchlight Men's Shelter, formerly Congregations for the Homeless, construction was complete last summer, and the shelter began operations in that location almost immediately. I want to acknowledge, of course, that Porchlight runs several programs, we're just talking about the, the men's shelter component of that this evening. Previously, there had been the women, the Winter Shelter, starting in 2008, which shifted to year-round operations in around 2019, which had been temporarily located at the city-owned property at Lincoln Center. And again, Council recognized the importance of finding a permanent home for that facility, along with continuing to support other shelter programs in the city nearby. Want to highlight that this is what's known as an enhanced shelter, so there are 100 shelter beds, along with a day center, laundry, a kitchen that's serving three meals a day, case management services, employment support, behavioral health and addiction support as Since opening at the East Gate site, Porchlight has served over 450 individuals overnight, that doesn't include others who may be, be there just for day center services. The good neighbor agreement that was developed by a good neighbor advisory committee of residents and business owners in the area, as well as representatives from school district, and funders, and other service providers, their recommendations were implemented through the conditions of approval for the project, and are now being put into action by the staff, and also by the clients at, at Porchlight, who live those out in, in conducting things like multiple times a day doing trash walks and monitoring the area, particularly monitoring magnet areas that were identified as possibly being places where folks might want to congregate nearby, who may or may not be actual shelter clients. The Porchlight staff has also been building, are continuing to build a lot of community partnerships, bringing in folks to provide services to the men staying there, and engaging again with local businesses. One of the, one of the benefits of the close relationship between Porchlight and its neighbors is that, in fact, I believe 12 of their clients are now housed permanently at the Plymouth Supportive Housing Project, just across the parking lot. So shifting to Plymouth, this is permanent supportive housing for single adults who are exiting chronic homelessness. There's 92 units there for clients, and I believe three for onsite staff as well. The building includes a behavioral health clinic and nursing services onsite, and those are funded as a pilot through the city's housing stability program. I've heard from Plymouth staff that the level of engagement of the clients and residents who are staying here in the various services is among the highest of any of their sites. I believe upwards of 90% of, of folks who are living there are engaged in case management services, for example. Of the 92 units, 43, a little over half, were filled through a local referral process. Plymouth developed partnerships with, with staff in the city of Bellevue, and other local cities, and other shelters and service providers on the east side. Five of the city's homelessness outreach program clients are now housed there permanently, 12 from Porchlight, as we mentioned, and I believe 11 from Sophia Way, among other local referrals. Of those that were, the remainder of the units were filled through the county's coordinated entry system, although we understand that several of those residents also came with connections to Bellevue, they just entered through a different, through a different pathway. So, it is really directly serving our community and beyond. Plymouth similarly is building a lot of really effective community partnerships, including food donations for folks who are staying there, living there. Seattle Humane as well has facilitated some volunteer opportunities, and other businesses are volunteering from time to time to support the residents. The third project on the site, Polaris East Gate, is operated by the Inland Group, it's total of 360 units of affordable housing, workforce housing. It is almost entirely leased at this point. It's split into two phases, so phase one, those units started with move-ins in March, and phase two is expected to be open in June, so in just a matter of a few weeks, that'll be another 220 units there that can be filled. It's really a family-friendly project, there's a mix of one to three bedroom units, playground, other, other family supportive features onsite, including YMCA Early Learning Center. The Inland Group worked really closely with the Bellevue School District and other local agencies to encourage folks who are in need of affordable housing in Bellevue to be able to take advantage of this, this incredible opportunity to stay in their communities, excuse me. With the school district, there was a master lease agreement for about 50 units, and then they shared leasing info with others as well. I'm going to shift now to Captain Spingler to talk about public safety.
Thank you, good evening. So first, I'd just like to, just let, let you know, just a note that I go to a lot of community meetings in the south end of Bellevue, I'm the South Sector Patrol Captain, and Plymouth Housing, the shelter, they're always of, it's always a topic of concern amongst most of the community groups that I speak with. And I say that just because it just represents, you know, a pretty significant change for that, for this, the south end of Bellevue, and that's just their way of, of voicing their concerns, generally through us. So what we've done over the last year, I have data from last June through the end of April, what we've done is we've just, we're just checking to see if, if the shelter at the old location is the, the calls for service are correlating to the, the new location, and in general, it is. We looked at a half-mile radius between, from, from the shelter, half-mile radius out, and we looked, it turned out to be about 56% increase in calls for service for the police department. Now, when I say calls for service, that doesn't, that doesn't translate to crimes necessarily, what those calls generally are, are, you can see up on the, on the screen, assist calls, which could be anything from, I've locked my keys in my car, to I just have a general question, could be a 911 hang-up calls, alarm calls. It says questionable activity up there, that's just a, something that, something suspicious. So those are the, the major call types that we've seen the increase of. We have not seen an increase in violent crime, we have not seen an increase in. We have not seen an increase in property crimes, burglaries, car prowls, those types of calls. There is a, a small increase in trespass complaints, and that's really the only crime we've seen an increase in. And that, that's to be expected. We're bringing in a lot of new people to that neighborhood. There are businesses around there, there are homes around there. And so a small increase in trespass is actually something that we absolutely expected. So nothing out of the ordinary with that. So from, from the opening of Porchlight from June of last year through, the data is through April, they've had 289 calls for service, again, primarily not crime-related, so assist calls, trespass calls, disturbance calls, where we just come and kind of help mediate that situation. For Plymouth Crossing, that, that number is 120 calls for service, but again, noise complaints, assist calls, those types of things. We're fortunate to have our CCAT team, we're fortunate to have the Fire Cares Team, because they've actually taken about a quarter of those calls away from the patrol officers. And they're, you know, they're much better equipped to handle those types of calls, so. And then, you know, the last thing I would just like to note is that our collaboration with Porchlight especially has been great over the last year. They've been really responsive to us. I feel like, you know, I feel like they would say the same thing about the, the police departments as being responsive to them. The collaboration, we go to monthly meetings with them to discuss, you know, whatever my concerns might come up with the community. We've dedicated one of our CCAT officers to spend a significant amount of time at the shelter. And so I think that partnership is really what's helped, you know, make sure that there isn't an increase in, in the, in the, in the crime that, that some people are concerned about the shelter. Thank you.
Thanks. So in conclusion with this presentation, I wanted to just share a few anecdotes that we've heard from, from our outreach staff, as well as program staff, just to illustrate some of the impacts of the, of the programs on the site in the community. So for, for Polaris Affordable Housing, we've got, you know, Bellevue School District teachers and staff that are able to live in or keep living in the community that they serve. At Plymouth, one of our outreach program clients who, who became housed there, I think this is not unlike the story that Nico told earlier, but similarly wept when, when first walking into his own apartment, right, for the first time in his life. And we've also heard from their staff that some of the residents at Plymouth, you know, who previously experienced chronic homelessness, that is a criteria for, for moving in there, you know, while they were unsheltered, were struggling really daily to sort of stay alive and meet basic needs. And now that they are there and have a place to live, they are able to focus on sort of rediscover activities that might bring them joy. So one, one resident is sort of rediscovering a love of drawing and, and looking for colored pencils to support that, to support that activity. And then, you know, with Porchlight, I understand that roughly half of their staff at this point are former clients who have found stability and are, are happy to have that opportunity to give back to the program and to the community. So the synergy of these three things and the, the ability to bring them to the, to the community is having, you know, having real measurable impacts. And we want to make sure that you hear those stories as well. So we're available for questions or discussion.
Thanks. Well, that's great. What a wonderful story you just told us. Thank you. Councilmember Stokes, I'm going to start with you.
Yeah, this is, this is really exciting to, to hear this. And I've heard, you know, we, we get information about it from time to time, and we, we have a feeling that it's working quite well, but it really is great to have this presentation like this and get the data and everything else. And one of the things that is heartening to me and to the rest of everybody sitting up here is that the real story is this, not what we've heard over radio and things by some people who are, you know, really taking Plymouth's name and other stuff and making it sound as if this is like the worst that's happening in Seattle and all. And unfortunately, it doesn't take much people to do that, but the reality is, I think 99% of the people don't believe that and think that, I get a lot of comments of people around that say, you know, they're very surprised. And, you know, we've had the opportunity in other places to, to work with homeless people and things, and it's, it's really, this is a really great step and something we're all proud of doing this. It was a, it was a big leap to make this happen, but it's working. And staffing has been just excellent, and, and working with our staff, working with them has been really great. And what we really appreciate also is the police department and fire department and working with us and working with the people there. And, you know, Officer, what you said is just, it just is really what police department and policemen are doing, is really getting in the community, and it's really adding to the community and helping people and helping them not fall into crime or anything else. I mean, it's just a, it's a really smart way to, to, to work with this. So it's just really heartening to have your presentation and, and what you're, what you've accomplished, and that means that we can keep working to do more of this, because this works. Thank you very much.
Great. Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you. You know, when I read the information, what I kept thinking about is that the way we've gone about this is very thoughtful. It's about serving community and it's about partnership. And that mural is phenomenal at Porchlight. We actually had experienced Bellevue had on May 10th or something like that, we actually had a couple of tours of both Porchlight, Polaris, and Plymouth. And I think that it was really helpful to educate the community about how these different systems work, because I think there's a lot of confusion still with the community between the difference of an emergency shelter, permanent supportive housing, and then workforce family housing. So I would just encourage us to keep doing that, just because I think that, you know, as you've talked about, sometimes this is something different. In South Bellevue, without that understanding, there can be concerns about what is this campus, who is living there, what's going on. So I would encourage that. It's taken quite a while to get to this point. So I think it's always helpful to kind of take a look back and reflect on when we adopted the homeless shelter land use code back in 2018, we baked in the Community Advisory Board and the Good Neighbor Agreement. So I do, I am curious about, what are some lessons learned looking back at that? Are, is the Community Advisory Board still going? And was there any surprises between what was adopted in the Good Neighbor Agreement? And then has, has it morphed over time? And are there any surprises, both good and, and challenging? And then I'm glad to hear about the CCAT. I like the fact that we have a dedicated person that is supporting Porchlight, because to me, building relationships is really important in order to help people that maybe just need a, a little bit more help. So I would encourage us to keep doing that. I understand we're also going to be getting a CCAT update, so I would like to better understand how that's going and, in terms of those two pieces. And then lastly, just super excited about Polaris, more two and three bedroom than, than the smaller units, having early learning onsite and BSD as a partner. We heard at the Bellevue Boys and Girls Club event over the weekend that I believe there's 700 kids in Bellevue that are experiencing homelessness. So the more we have these units that families can get into, you know, stably housed at rents that are affordable, will be really important to make sure that our school district continues to have strong enrollment and that the families are taken care of. So that was my one question, though, about just lessons learned, surprises, or one way or the other, about the, the GNA or the advisory board.
Sure. The advisory board is still meeting on a monthly basis, and Captain Spengler and I attend those regularly, just to listen in and, and hear feedback. They're facilitated by a, a great staff member at Porchlight and have pretty active participation still by some of the adjacent businesses and residents. As far as surprises, it's an interesting question. I think actually the implementation of the Good Neighbor Agreement has been really steady. And, and, you know, even through a, a change in leadership at Porchlight, right, Troy is now leading that organization and doing a great job, but wasn't here when, when those agreements were, were developed. And the staff, I, you know, I keep hearing are really committed to, to following those through. All of the various safety protocols are in place, the, you know, daily trash checks, those things. They're pretty diligent about trying to maintain open communication with the adjacent office park, for example, and working with them to, you know, to resolve concerns. So, yeah, I don't think there've been any, any challenges with implementation of the Good Neighbor Agreement. And I think the ongoing communication, I'll say at least from my perspective, has, with the neighbors through that advisory board, is, is really helpful.
I would agree. I don't think there were any surprises from my perspective as far as calls for service or anything like that. And I think it just, that just has to do with the process that we went through to, to make this happen, right? That good, the Good Neighbor Agreement was such a lengthy process and it covered, I think, pretty much every aspect that we could have covered, and that's what really helped prepare the neighborhood of, of, you know, for the opening of it. I guess one of the surprises, I, I might say, is that we're not seeing the increase in crime that maybe people expected, right? When I say, I like the violent crime and those kind of things, there was some expectation of that, whether that was real or not. So we haven't seen that, and so I guess that, I guess that's a good surprise, if, if.
So maybe it's the, the CCAT going into place plus the GNA and the partnership then, right? It takes a whole village to make sure that we all stay safe.
I, I think so, absolutely, you know, and then the collaboration with, with Porchlight and their staff as well, because, you know, they go out and they do their own outreach, which, which also helps, helps everybody to kind of work together, so.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Bianca, I forgot to mention your good work on the Safe Parking Pilot Program. I had a chance to visit and it was very well done. I hope it's going to be successful. Yeah. Thanks for the report. You know, I'm glad to have, heard, you know, to have a report from you. It's nice to hear. You know, we haven't been, except during the opening day, you know, I don't think we have heard too much about it, except we've been hearing some emails from some neighbors talking, you know, that there's some challenges. I don't even want to say a problem or not, without knowing, you know, what you may have to tell us, so. My question is, Porchlight, there's not 450 people served. What's the turnover? You have turnovers? What is turnover? What happened to them when they, do you have tracked them? What hap, what, what happened to those people? Do they come back?
The shelter has 100 beds and they are full most nights.
They're full most nights, okay.
And so some folks may stay there for, you know, on a nightly basis for an extended period of time, while others may just be there for one or two nights and move on, right? The shelter does track certain outcomes, but not every single person that has stayed there. So we, we don't, we don't have sort of long-term outcomes from that, but they do, actually as part of their funding agreement with their, with the city for, through their human services contract, do report on metrics. And then also, one of the components of the Good Neighbor Agreement is to report certain metrics on an annual basis. So we're anticipating that they'll share some more of that, that data in the coming months as that anniversary comes up.
Yeah. And what's the expectation we have for the occupants when it comes? Do we give them some expectation? They need to be?
Oh, yes.
Go to be gone by a certain time with a certain limit and encourage them to do things or help them to?
Yep, sure. The, yeah, the shelter has a, a number of, of rules for folks who are staying there about what's allowed onsite or not. They also inform every, every man who comes in about areas where they are not allowed to congregate outside and the expectations of the neighborhood. They've been very consistent in, in communicating that. Yeah, and then there are set hours and things for, for folks who are staying there.
Yeah. I stay in touch with a couple of them whenever this is the first time, and they are no longer was there, so I lost touch with them. So I'm just curious if there's some idea. I hope that they've done well. Anyway, the second thing you mentioned, half of the staff are former clients. Is that right? That's great. How do they work out? Do they stay there for how long in a period of time they stay as a staff?
I don't have that information.
Yeah.
But I, yeah, I do know that the, a number of the staff there are former clients and.
I think that would be a good thing to know. They can become examples of the model for other new clients and your own expectation.
Yeah, we can imagine that's a, that's a powerful model for the men who are staying there currently.
Let's see. You have the Community Advisory Board. Have they communicated with the council? We've heard from them. Are they active? They're involved?
They are active and they meet monthly. It's really a, a board that advises Porchlight and shares information just between the community and Porchlight. So there's, they're, they're not planning to come to council, but we, you know, we are here to share that information with you.
Yeah, they continue to be helpful?
Yeah.
They have inputs, good or bad, either way?
Yep, there's space in each meeting for folks to raise issues of concern or question, and then Porchlight staff is sharing updates with them as well.
Yeah, it'd be good to share with us as well, because when we hear from the other public, we will know, you know, what is true, what is not, what's fact, or what's maybe just neighborhood concerns. So, let's see. We have partners as well, right? Any sense what are the partners? Partner who provide help? Partnership.
You mean in terms of city funding?
Yeah, yeah. In terms of the Porchlight, you know, they bring food, they help?
Oh, the other community partners. Oh, yeah, I think there's a, a wide range. Folks volunteer to cook and serve meals. I know they've had businesses come in to provide dental care and haircuts recently. It's, it's a pretty wide range, yeah.
You have no shortage of them? You don't need to?
I think they're, yeah, they're continuing to, to build a really active list of volunteers. Folks are happy to help.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Lee.
I'm not done yet.
Well, I'm going to ask you to ask the rest of your questions offline, because some of these things is, are actually in the packet. Councilmember, yeah, Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all the hard work you do there. Thank you for the update. I have been out there of two or to all three of the facilities. I think they're amazingly well-run. Security is a high priority, and not just for residents, staff, the neighbors, it's the whole community. And at Plymouth Crossing, when I was there, I had a chance to meet with their Director of Security, seems, you know, very well, a lot, a lot of experience, very well-trained, and was, you know, really getting down to work and, and wanted to make sure that staff and, and residents were, were well taken care of. But it was great to have that interaction. I think they have someone real high-quality there. I can certainly understand kind of going into this, some fears, those are realistic, and I, and I'm glad that we, we treated them seriously. But Captain Spengler, I'm, I'm thrilled to see the data that you brought in. I think it's worth kind of remembering that sometimes those worst fears, while, you know, it's okay to acknowledge them, they, they rarely pan out to be the case. And, and I think it's especially helpful, I know that Redmond is looking at a Plymouth housing facility. And, you know, I think if you go to Bellevue, to the Bellevue facility and tour it, we had a chance to meet some of the residents, the staff, we've seen how they operate, you know, they, I know they have a process to work through in Redmond, but I think that the Bellevue facility gives a lot of hope, and I think that they'll see the same kind of positive transformational impacts on the community when they get it in place. Also encouraged to see that the, the great neighbor policies that are in place, you know, those are critical. We definitely need that. We need to make sure that, you know, we do set a good, high standard. But I'm really pleased to see that it's not just the facilities that are being expected to be good neighbors and aren't the only good neighbors, but the community itself. You talked about the ways that the community's being engaged and all they're doing. I think that's a really important part of being a good neighbor. It's about everybody working together to, to support those facilities. And, and I think that that's very clearly happening, and we're seeing the results. Just a couple of questions for you. How do community members provide feedback? You know, is the, you know, related to the Eastgate Housing Campus or the Community Advisory Board meetings, are those open? Do they take comment or somebody, you know, there, we, as Councilmember Lee said, you know, we get those emails kind of expressing some concerns. How does someone take a concern and submit that?
I get, most of my concerns through the My Bellevue app or through just, uh, community meetings, homeowners associate, homeowners association meetings, that type of, that type of communication, or directly, they'll just reach out directly if it's, you know, police department-related, but that's just. But that's generally how we get our feedback.
And for you, Bianca, what do you think is the most helpful? What's the best way for community members to communicate with you and your team?
I think we, folks can always contact us from MyBelview. That's a really good way to do it. We also have an email address, which is homelessness@bellevywa.gov. And so that's an easy way for folks to get in touch with our outreach team. I think if people have questions about any of the three particular operators there, I'm sure they also are happy to hear directly from neighbors and could reach out. People also, community members may not always know which entity they're having questions about. And so we're happy to take those calls and help connect them with the right folks. With the advisory board, Porchlight manages that board. I think if someone were interested in participating in it, I would encourage them to reach out directly to their staff to understand how to join those meetings.
Okay. You're doing amazing work. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Bianca, first Safe Parking Program that made me so emotional. And now the East Gate Housing Campus, amazing job, Captain. Thank you for being here. East Gate Housing Campus, I think is an example of how a spectrum of housing needs can be addressed through partnership and a shared commitment to serving the common good. It's great to hear all of that. Thank you all. Thank you all of the partners. And thank you, this council and the former council members for making this a reality. I think it's amazing to hear all of the good stories that you shared. Basically, we are making a difference in lives of our most vulnerable residents. And that's, I think, why we are all here. So kudos to you all. And I'm very happy that we are monitoring, we are controlling, we are hearing the first report. So thank you. I have one question for each of you. One, Captain, based on, and that's kind of building on Councilmembers' own question. Now, we had one year of less than yeared. So looking forward, what are some of the next steps to ensure the ongoing success and integration of the East Gate Housing Campus within the surrounding neighborhood?
I think it's going to be continuing to work with the neighbors and the businesses to push out the programs that we have to offer to help out. You know, we have our trespass program, for example, so that the businesses can rely on the police department to monitor their properties and trespass folks that aren't supposed to be there, right? So pushing out that information. Also, the partnership between Porchlight and CCAT for the behavioral health has, I think, really been beneficial. And so just seeing what we can do to ensure that continues, if not, try to step it up a little bit.
That's awesome. Bianca, you mentioned some of the greatest stories, like the first one was 12 people, I think you said, from shelter to the supportive housing. That's correct. How are we marketing that? Marketing maybe is a bad word. How are we sharing this amazing news to all of our community members? That this is what we are doing for our most vulnerable people? That's my one part of the question, that I think we should share these stories. And I think it's good that everyone knows about. And then, do you have any goals? Like, do we have like, hey, we are hoping soft goals by two years from now. Instead of 12, we have 50 or 60 or 100. Is there any measurement of success that we can have a goal for ourselves to achieve those goals?
Wow. Goals in terms of having additional facilities for folks? Is that what you're thinking?
Whatever goals that we have, we can have as success stories. One of them you mentioned, hey, 12 people.
Right.
I don't want to use graduate, but graduate from this. And then, this is like amazing stories.
Yep, it is. Yeah, those really direct impacts are pretty incredible. You know, I think we're seeing in Bellevue and across the East Side, more and more resources coming online. And every time that happens, that's more opportunities for folks who are struggling to get inside and get the support we need. So, you know, some of the numericals about that are probably best communicated by our human services staff and also the housing team, who are really looking at the numbers on that. But, yeah, I think continuing to, you know, to provide support and support the success of the programs that we have in place, right, as these partnerships that we've been talking about tend to do. In terms of getting the word out, you know, I think, you know, whoever's watching this meeting hopefully can hear a little bit.
Five people.
Yep, all five of them. And, you know, certainly through the city's communication channels and newsletters, we can do that. You know, the organizations themselves are also, of course, putting that good word out. And we're happy to encourage them to do that.
Thank you. I think we should celebrate this. Thank you so much for everything you guys do. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. So just to put this in perspective, the people in the council and in the community who are supportive, in support of this project like six years ago, really went to battle for this and staff as well. And to have you both sitting here, working in collaboration and talking about the results and the successes of this is just really amazing to me. It kind of makes me teary, because it just seems so normal to have you here talking. But that was something that we had to work really hard to get. And it is because of the community involvement that we have such good partnerships, like the two of you and your teams. So I'm really grateful to have you here tonight. We, when we talked about having a permanent men's shelter, we said we didn't just want a shelter. We wanted a pathway for people to get into stable housing and onto a stable life. And so to have the shelter and then the supportive housing with all the services that they provide, and then affordable housing, all in this proximity is quite amazing. And I believe we are the only affluent community in the country to be able to do this. I know that there is a country, a country, a city, and I think it's Marina Del Rey. They have the same three things, but they're very far apart from each other. So to have these all in such close proximity, I hope that we can be a good role model for other cities in the country. And I'm also really pleased to have that onsite childcare. That's huge. So that's great. I just think that this whole program, we're providing dignity, compassion, and support for the people who need it in our community. And I'm just really proud of the work that we're doing. So thank you. Thank you so much. It's been nice to hear from you.
I asked a lot of questions.
Yes, you did.
Did not make any comments. I'd like to make one comment.
Okay, go for it.
I mean, I was here during this whole process.
Yes, you were.
So we know what we went through. And as a result, we got the best program days in the country. So, you know, we all can take pride, take credit for that. Thanks for answering my questions. I do have a comment. Major Spangler, you mentioned the data we see. It's going up, you know? And you mentioned there's not really any crime, but you mentioned the staff, the trespass, there's some kind of activities. So I don't know what does that mean, having a crime? But we do hear from people, from the public, their concerns about these folks, you know, however they're disturbing the people. So I would like to hear from you. And I want to make a comment. I do hear them. And we want to know whether it's true or not true. What can we do if we need to maybe provide more police presence, perhaps? But that's my comment and the question. So what you might say.
Sure. Some of the comments that we receive are all related to some of the loitering that might be happening with some of the homeless people that maybe aren't in the shelter. Maybe they went to the shelter for the day and they're not staying there that night. So there has been, I guess, an increase in that type of activity. And so that, is that what you're alluding to as far as the trespassing? But that's kind of the bulk of the comments that I would say we get from a lot of the community.
Are they of concern? If the community are concerned with?
The concern is that there's, what they see as an increase in, you know, homeless people in and around that area. That's the concern. Generally, what I will do is I'll, you know, explain the program and I will point them to the police department's website where they can look at the data dashboards and the crime and they can see for themselves, you know, what's happening and what the impact is. Or, you know, just explain like I've explained to you.
But I guess the concern is increasing. I just want to be sure it's.
Councilmember Lee, you said you were going to make a comment.
That's my comment.
That was a question. I'm going to ask you to take any more questions offline. Okay, so that's great. Thank you. We'll move on to our next topic here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Carlson, would you like to introduce the last study session item?
Thank you, Council. So we have our economic development team here tonight. They're going to provide an informational overview in the first part, related to market statistics and workforce statistics. And then in the second part of the presentation, they will be providing an overview of work that they have proposed for capacity building in business districts. And we'll also be asking, seeking for some direction from council on future work related to that. So we have Jesse Canedo, Chief Economic Development, Chief of Economic Development, and Edward Butterfield, our Public-Public Partnership Manager. And I will turn it over to Jesse.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. As Diane said, we've got two sections tonight. First is information only. Part two, we're seeking some direction from the council on engagement with the business community to help support our commercial districts. We have those really clearly demarcated in the presentation. I'll just note upfront that the first part is our quantitative information that we usually provide. And then part two, Edward's going to deep dive into some new terminology and some community partners that we have been working with. Information-only section, those letters will be coming to City Hall Plaza in June. They've been very popular at many events. So in terms of market updates, the Seattle-Bellevue area is still doing broadly really well. This morning, just as a side note, Oxford Economics, a global consulting firm, put out their Global Cities Index 2024. And Seattle is the number six metro area in the world. From, as we look at economic opportunity, environment, governance, the Seattle area is number six. And Bellevue is a huge part of driving that impact and driving that ranking. As we're looking through the report, on the top 50 across the world, economic diversification, access to a strong workforce pipeline, and access to arts and culture are recurring themes across the top 50 cities around the world. And so as you all know, we are working on all of that here in Bellevue. In terms of our local KPIs, our quantitative numbers are a little mixed this quarter, largely because of macroeconomic factors. As we look at unemployment, that has continued to tick up. But that 3.8% is still a really good number compared to historical averages. During my time in Bellevue, we've been everywhere from mid-fours to low-five. And an economist will tell you that natural unemployment is somewhere in the 3% to 4% range to allow for people to change jobs, get training, exit and enter the workforce as their life changes. So we're still in a really healthy area. We are continuing to monitor and work with our major employers. Office vacancy has continued to go up slightly in downtown, but we are seeing more tours of office space than we have since before the pandemic began. So a lot of companies are just waiting for some of the macroeconomic factors, like interest rates and other things, to tick down a little bit so that they might start their expansion plans again. But the shining star for this quarter is tourism. We have done really well. That number has ticked up significantly over the last two years. And it's impressive considering the fact that business travel has still not returned to pre-pandemic levels. Alaska has publicly noted they're starting to see more people book Alaska flights for business. But the cities work with partners like Visit Bellevue and our local hoteliers on items like the tourism promotion area, on services like bellhop, and some of the forthcoming summer tours that they'll be offering are really helping drive leisure travel, which is new for Bellevue. And that was part of our intent with the work around tourism and the economic development plan. So lots of things going really well, lots of macroeconomic factors. But our work on economic diversification is making sure that we are spreading the wealth and looking for alternative growth in the city. One of the things that helps us stay competitive is our strong workforce here in Bellevue. In the Global Cities Report that came out today, it did note that our metro area has a weaker point in workforce production. Bellevue and the region attract a global workforce, folks that were trained, degreed, in other parts of the country and other parts of the world, which is a net positive. We have an incredible global workforce, but we may rely slightly too heavily on folks that are coming to our region after being educated elsewhere in the world. So we asked ourselves the question, why? Workforce is a part of our economic development plan. We hired a consultant to do some small work comparing our metro area, so the tri-county Seattle-Bellevue-Tacoma metropolitan area, with peer metro areas across the country in terms of the number of degrees and certifications that are conferred annually. On the screen, you see the report from the technology sector. So we have them analyze technology, life sciences, and advanced manufacturing, which are three strong areas for our region, and growth opportunities for Bellevue. And you'll see that in tech, we're kind of in the middle, we're about, we're slightly lower than Dallas, slightly higher than San Francisco. In the life sciences, we degree or certify about half as many folks every year compared to our peer regions. And in advanced manufacturing, it's about 1 in 7 compared to our peer regions across the country. Bellevue College, UW, Seattle U, others do a lot of great things. They are some of the best institutions in the country, right here in the Northwest. But as our region has grown in the last 20-some-odd years, the pipeline for workforce has not grown at the same rate. So we continue to rely on workers moving here from other parts of the country. Again, not an immediate issue, but it could pose a long-term risk if we're overly dependent on folks moving here after being educated elsewhere. So we're going to continue our conversations with Bellevue College, UW, Seattle U, and others to see how we can support the region growing the workforce pipeline for the region. And then last piece of quantitative update, FIFA 2026. We are really excited. Just wanted to give the council a small update on where we are. As the council knows, in February, it announced that Seattle will be hosting six games in 2026 over that month-long tournament. It'll be a real great opportunity to showcase Bellevue and our entire Western Washington to the world. It's a global audience. Hundreds of thousands of people will be doing city-to-city tours. They'll go to a game in Vancouver, then one here, and then one in Mexico City. So it's going to be a really interesting movement of people during that month. And Bellevue is set up to really reap the benefits of that tournament coming to the Puget Sound. So our Bellevue hotels are already part of the official booking block for the teams, for the traveling executives of FIFA, for folks who are trying to get in their reservations early. And we are working with Visit Bellevue and others in the region to look at how we can do additional events and marketing around the FIFA itself. So many people travel for the games in the stadium, but many more people travel for watch parties to visit with friends and go to places like Legion or The Goose to watch with their friends and family. The photo on the screen is from an outdoor watch party in Chicago from a few years ago. So we are working with Visit Bellevue to see what opportunities we have here in Bellevue on the East Side for those kinds of experiences. There's going to be a lot of interest for events, sponsorships, all sorts of things. If the council does hear of those, I'd ask that you send them back towards my staff or towards Visit Bellevue so we can plug them into the regional coordination that we're doing on this incredible visitor experience. And so with that, we're going to transition over to the direction portion of the evening. Edward's going to cover some elements. They're going to set up some really important work to support small businesses, retailers, and economic diversification across the city. Part of this conversation also sets some foundations for possible small business incentives in Wilburton, Belred, and other parts of the city that we are working on with our development services team and the development community. But the framework and the organizations that Edward is going to talk about really lay a really nice foundation to self-diversify the types of small businesses, retain them, recruit new ones, and improve the viability of those businesses in our city. So we are going to be seeking direction after the presentation to continue work with existing district management organizations and begin engagement with new partners in areas like Crossroads, Factoria, and Wilburton, so that we can identify and implement the appropriate structures to improve district management across the city. And with that, Edward will take us into the details.
Great. Well, I think I have the more fun and exciting part of our presentation, and that's our amazing Bellevue business districts. Today, we're going to talk about seven districts. These constitute our largest districts. And I want to recognize that we have many great neighborhood shopping areas that were not included in this list. These districts really have a diverse mix of uses and represent different development eras with each district having unique opportunities for Bellevue. Downtown and Old Bellevue are definitely our most distinctive districts. And I would say Old Bellevue is probably our most charming. Belred and Spring District are newest, and there's a lot of current work around creating their own brand identity. And then we have our emerging districts of Wilburton, Crossroads, and Factoria. And these areas are really going through different phases of change in response to shifting economic factors, community demographics, and zoning. And so on to our next slide, it's really the fun part. You know, benefits of business districts are really wide, and this is from our wine walk last year. They foster a unique sense of community and place, and this is really important as people are looking for more authentic experiences. They enrich the local community and city with events, including cultural and arts and many, and they provide a place for gathering for our community. And then lastly, they really promote economic diversity and provide essential services that we all use and enjoy. Next slide. And so we wanted to shift, really, the foundation of successful districts are district management organizations. So we wanted to give some high-level overview of what these district management structures are. And as this slide shows, these management structures are not, they're not, they're not, excuse me, inclusive, but they actually do overlap. So volunteer associations are kind of the heart of district management organizations. These are your small business owners. They're volunteer-led. They really work hard to create something. These are like your merchants' associations. The next ones we have is our member associations. Typically, members pay a fee, and in return for that fee, they get a list of services, and they typically have staff. And then Business Improvement Districts is an area where this is both a funding mechanism and a structural mechanism, and is unique in that it also includes specific requirements for establishment. And we'll talk about these a little bit later. We do not have one in, an example of this in Bellevue, but we do have some great regional examples. In our next slide, the city really and municipalities really play different roles in district management with district management organizations. This really depends on the leadership and the needs of the community. Here in Bellevue, we've highlighted some of the ways we as city staff work with these organizations. We work with them from assisting with the initial organization and setting up these management organizations. We provide grants, we assist with city processes, and we really involve these districts in city projects and policy development as key stakeholders. Next is a list of the organizations we have. So within Bellevue, we have our Belred Arts District Community Alliance, Old Bellevue Merchants Association, which is also known by OBMA, Bellevue Downtown Association, our BDA in Spring District. And these all represent really diverse areas of focus, structures, and, and different areas of involvement from the city. And I'll walk through each one of these areas, these are, these groups. So the first one is Belred Arts District. This is our newest organization. They are a volunteer-based organization and just hired a new interim executive director as of last week. We're very excited about the progress. The city's collaboration with them was really helping lead the establishment. So the city art staff worked very closely with them and continues to work with them on sponsorship and capacity-building opportunities. And they have a very broad area of focus, which includes district branding and marketing events, arts, and advocacy. And of course, had the successful opening of the Two-Lined Event, which many of you joined us for. And they're really working on their next step of organizational development, which includes looking at other funding sources and other program and, and opportunities to grow. So we're excited about their work. The next one is Old Bellevue Merchants Association. They are our longest-lasting, our longest-existing district management organization. They're volunteer-based, which is amazing considering they're all small businesses, business owners. And really, the city currently is working with them on capacity building from, as we're helping them out reorganize from some of the impacts of COVID that they realized. And also sponsorship opportunities like the, the Main Street Wine Walk that we did with them last year as we closed Main Street. At the heart of Old Bellevue is really supporting small businesses, locally-owned small businesses. But they also have beautification projects like the Holiday Lights, excuse me, the Landscape Planters fundraising, marketing, and networking. So a really important organization. The next one we have is BDA. They are our most, they're a membership-based organization. They are really the place management partner for the city. We really consider them a partner on, on so many things. And they do the signature events for downtown. They do our marketing and branding, advocacy, and placemaking, and they're really looking on at a strategic plan to look at different funding sources and other ways that they can continue to advance and be bolder in their events and initiatives. So we're, we're excited about their progress. And then Spring District. Spring District is, is a member-based organization with Wright-Rundstad. It's very unique to have a developer be so involved in district management, so we're very fortunate to have Wright-Rundstad in our community. And the city's involvement was really land use and policy support, really building this district literally from the ground up. And we also continue working with Spring District on ongoing events and support. And they also, their areas of focus is very broad. They, they focus on works, workplace, residential and, residential marketing, and then retail. And a lot of this is driving events and providing activities for the workers that go there, the residents, and of course, driving traffic for the retailers that are there. And finally, we want to touch on Business Improvement Districts. A bid is not present currently in Bellevue, but how bids work is they are a partnership between a municipality and a district management organization. A similar example is the tourism, the TPA, the Tourism Promotion Area. And it's very structured tool the same way where in a bid, essentially, the city would collect an assessment against properties within a district. The city would then use those funds to fund a place management organization or a district management organization. And similar to a TPA, requires the volunteer participation of the property owners. We have some great examples of Business Improvement Districts. Of course, Ballard Alliance in Seattle is a great one. They do a lot of events like the Farmer's Market. Downtown Tacoma Partnership is very focused on clean and safe and arts. And then Roslyn Bid Arlington, Virginia, was one where a recent study tour, many of the council members were able to go, go and learn more about that in Washington, DC. And then finally, we have our emerging districts. What makes these emerging in many ways are the changes that are happening. With Factoria, of course, going through a lot of changes with, with the change in work patterns and shopping, pre, post-COVID. Crossroads is really emerging more than just a mall. It's really emerging as a district and a neighborhood. And then Wilburton will be going through some significant land use changes. And we recognize none of these areas have business district organizations, and that, that's one of the challenges, but also really opportunity for the city to be involved in these areas. And finally, this is where we would really like to be involved with these emerging districts, is, is taking the next steps. And this includes convening stakeholders in these areas. Most importantly, understanding the district needs and gaps. This can only come from the business owners and others in the area to see what their unique needs are. And then finally, just identifying the right structure and tools for district management that we went over. And, and we think through these steps, we would be able to make something unique for each one of them representing that. And finally, we have, are open to any questions from the Council, so thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you for the presentation. So you are looking for a direction on, should we continue to work with existing district organizations as you outlined, right?
Continue to work with existing organizations and, as Edward said, convene partners in Crossroads, Factoria, and Wilburton.
Yep, okay. Councilmember Lee, let's start with you.
Thank you. Well, as you know, I'm always interested in economic development because that's the blood, the engine that makes the, the train run, I guess. I appreciate you looking at all the specific, you know, things that can make the Bellevue sort of with vitality, you know, itself. And we already have a very talented workforce. A lot of companies come here, starting with Microsoft, and we have a lot of small businesses. And small businesses flourish because people come here, they live here, and they go to school here with family. And then the reason they can afford to come is because they get business, work for major companies. We have lots of great companies here located, and they stay here because they love this area. We did a lot of the right things, good land use, good public safety, good everything. And small business is important, but they are a result of all these other things, right? Because if people don't spend money, it's hard to get them to have opportunities. So I, but I like what you're saying because we need to do all these things. But my thought is that this might be the elements that will attract people to tourism, which is, again, another piece of the economic development. But tourism is usually not the most sustainable business, because when the economy is no good, people aren't going to come. Economy is good, everybody come. And also, it depends on the surrounding areas. You know, we have FIFA, you mentioned. People, people go to Seattle for FIFA. So they come here, they say, hey, Bellevue's a great place. They come here to visit. So we are the benefic, beneficiaries. But it's all good, because if we are not prepared, we don't have the attraction, they're not going to come here. They're going to go to Tacoma, they're going to Renton, go to other places. So we need to provide a variety of traction. So it's all good. I like that a lot. So I believe that we should also focus on the bigger pictures. And the big pictures, we need to be looking at how to attract global talent, global business, global, because there's a global migration right now happening, even with the United States. People are leaving Silicon Valley. They're going to Dallas, we'll talk about Dallas. They're going to Boston, they're going to Colorado, Denver. You know, we want them to come here. So I think we need to be globally the same way. Europeans come here, Asians come here, and they all have, they're looking for technology because AI is all here, data, you know, cloud computing. And that's where they get their best brain and best education, best collaboration, best partnership. So I think we need to build on those things. So what I'm trying to say is we probably should get, keep all this, it's all good, but we need to develop the other person, other foundation of how to attract global talents by using our partners in GSP, by the PSRC's economic development, by leveraging other cities, other counties in our area where, what, we can get expertise to provide transportation, to buy visit, you know, to all the places we advertise. I love the Visit Bellevue's new poster, you know, I don't want you, and information pieces. Those are great. Bellevue is not just Bellevue, Bellevue is the whole region. So each region, if they succeed, they come to us. That's what I'm looking at. So I would propose, I, you know, I promised the mayor, I asked that one question, that's it, I shut up. We need to have a real economic development office, which will provide a lot of resources necessary to do the big things. I'm shutting up. That's it. For the Council to consider.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, a very interesting update. A few things kind of jumped out at me, you know, the unemployment rate, obviously, not, not going in the direction we want. I think that's an important metric, you know? I think it may be indicative, too, of just kind of the mood of the community and just kind of how people view life maybe in general, so I, I think that's helpful. Appreciate your attention, too, and your ongoing efforts to increase higher education capacity in Bellevue and in the region. And I think the goal of having a four-year research university in our city is great, something I, I think we should all be supportive of. You know, I think this continued focus on place management around the city and in these various districts, I think that's great. We've seen proof of how well that can work. Belred Arts District is probably one of my favorite examples. It really seems to have gained a lot of momentum, you know? And it's not just about what does it do for our economy, but what does it do for our community and how it brings people together. The Two-Lined Opening was, was really proof of that, but there's been a lot of that there. So I think the more that we can bring people together, give them a sense of the community, I think the economic benefits can be, you know, a side benefit to that as well. So I think, too, I just was kind of curious, though. I do have one question. So you, you're looking for, to Crossroads, Factoria, and Wilburton, but I noted in the agenda memo that Eastgate also doesn't have a, you know, one of these groups of district management part. Are you looking at Eastgate as well, or is it just these three, or is it kind of everywhere?
That's a great question, Councilmember Hamilton. To Edward's comments, each district is a little unique. And so with Eastgate, it is more office-focused, there is less retail, and it's more spread out across the Eastgate District. So it's a little bit harder to do the kinds of place management that we are able to achieve with Factoria, Wilburton, Crossroads, and other parts of the city that we've talked about tonight. We are looking at opportu, we are looking at different solutions for Eastgate and how we might support some turnaround in that neighborhood, but it wouldn't be under this particular model.
Okay, great. This just seems like only upside in, in doing this work, so I just can't see any reason why we, we would not want to. So totally in support of, you know, you moving ahead and, and getting to work in these other areas as well. So, yeah, well done, and, yep, let's do more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you. I, I really appreciate the, the presentation and really seeing, plus, I love that hashtag Bellevue, so wherever it's traveling, you know, we put different wraps on it, so it just creates some different buzz. And then, you know, that global index of being number six really highlights Bellevue the place you want to be and continuing to really double down on the fact that we're an international, global city and that it is a region effect of Bellevue, Seattle, Tacoma. So I'm, I'm really excited to see that on those three pieces about diverse economic development, workforce, and arts. Absolutely, I would say, spend a little more time with Bellevue College. It just feels like that is an untapped gem in our community. And maybe with their new president, there is even more of an opportunity to create partnerships and, and more pipeline for different jobs. And, and I would say that when I think about diversity of, of jobs, I might say that it, it isn't all in tech, so let's make sure that we really are looking at the whole different places where careers might be. And then related to the arts, I had a chance to do the Art Walk on Saturday, and I, I am so excited about that space and the possibilities. Heard that there's a speakeasy that's actually in one of the buildings, so I'm going to go check that out. To Councilmember Hamilton's point, I did also notice that Eastgate was missing in this last slide, so I'm wondering if we could at least, in the direction, acknowledge that Eastgate is still going to be a focus, but maybe using a slightly different model so that for tracking and communicating with the community. Because, you know, with some of the conversations around the, the Eastgate area next to the car dealership, there's definitely been a lot of feedback we've gotten about the fact that Eastgate and, and the businesses, that is our community, and making sure that they're being taken care of, I think is really important. And, and then, when I think about these three areas, I agree, Factoria has had fits and starts. I'm hoping that with TNT being a new anchor there soon, it will infuse some more life in there. There's been so much conversation about how to create a more vibrant Factoria mall, and it just seems like it's kind of been a rocky road there. And so as we look at this, here's the piece I really just want to make sure we continue to double down on, and you brought this up, supporting the locally-owned small business. So what else can we do around affordable rents, pop-ups, incubator space, more connection of businesses to businesses of their similar size? I was at the cultural conversation last night, and one of the conversations we were having with, with, it was about women entrepreneurs, was how difficult it can be to be a small business owner and to be able to have kind of these peer exchanges where there's some common, shared experiences of being a small business owner. So as we look at these spaces, what are those structures and tools to really help connect the businesses together? And I might say that it may be cross-pollination, so even though a business may be in Factoria, if they are a similar size and, and footprint and business model to somebody who's in Belred, that, that would still be a good cross-pollination. So I, I think those are things are really important. I'm super excited, though, because I do think that these three areas are poised for growth, and let's just make sure that these small locally-owned businesses are not left behind as we look at those opportunities. That's one of the things that I worry about. So, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Zahn. I'm going to jump in here. I support what Councilmember Zahn said about the, supporting the small businesses, and it goes to my supportive Councilmember Lee's comment that he thinks we should have an independent. independent economic development department, and I think so too. I think we need to set up its own department and really focus on the things you're already doing and adding in to the support of the mom-and-pop businesses with all the development that are, that's going on. It takes, as you know, a lot of effort to support them and try to help them relocate in the same area. And then looking at ways that we might do incentivizing the low-cost office space or retail space. So as we look at the budget, I would like to consider, you know, what would it take to have that kind of emphasis in our economic development work? I also think about East Gate a lot, and they have not had the same activation that downtown has had. And we know how successful the activation downtown has been. Of course, that's mostly the BDA in partnership with the city. So looking at ways that we might be able to do some of that activation in these other areas, including East Gate, I think would be great. And then the last thing is, I don't know about anybody else, this was just a work thing for me, but I did do the Old Bellevue Wine Walk for research purposes. And I was really shocked to hear that the city was going to charge the Old Bellevue Merchants Association, what, $10,000 to shut down Main Street?
It's a little pricey once we add in all the requirements, yes.
Isn't that what we want, though? Why aren't we helping them do that? That's just shocking to me.
And we are. That is a high price tag, but we are looking at different ways that we can enable that without the highest, without the high cost.
Okay.
So that is part of the public space work that we briefed the council on a couple of months ago.
Okay, so I was surprised that we didn't utilize it last week or whenever that was.
I think we may have also had some conflicting information. I think we heard from the Old Bellevue Merchants Association that they weren't interested for this Wine Walk because of the level of effort. As Edward mentioned, they're still reorganizing and getting more volunteers, and it does take a significant amount of volunteer time to help the city shut the street down.
Yeah.
But we will definitely be working with them to look for the, for the next.
I think they're doing another one in the fall.
Yes.
We're going to start today.
Yes. Need to buy my tickets because they sold out this time.
Yeah, I mean, they couldn't take as many people either because they didn't have as much space. So anyway, those are my thoughts. Thank you, appreciate all that you're doing, really looking forward to seeing the results. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Actually, I think you, what you're talking about is a really good idea on the Economic Development Office piece. And, you know, those are things we can, we can work with. We're still doing really good in that area. Yeah, this is, this is really good conversation. We should have these more often about these pieces. And you know, the East Gate is interesting in, it's going to, it's going to be a lot to change it from these moderate-sized buildings and all to economic, to do a neighborhood-type thing and all. It's, it has its possibilities of it, and particularly for more housing in that area. And that's an area, an area we're really haven't looked into. Hopefully, when we get the Aquatic Center there, that will help in that area. And then, of course, it's divided because East Gate on the east side is different from the East Gate on the west side in that piece. And the neighborhood on the east side is actually part of, there isn't a real Factoria neighborhood in terms of people living there. They, there are some up in the hill there, but most of it is up into East Gate on that side of it. So, but it's a tremendous opportunity, and it's going to take a little time on that. But that, that means that we still have other areas to develop down the line. And I think, and the other factor that's interesting on this too is that, which is good luck for us, is that Issaquah is moving down closer. It's easier to get there. And I know from living in that area, we all, we go to Issaquah a lot, people do that. And people from Issaquah come here. So that whole area is one of the gems that could really be developed. It'll come, it's not going to happen anytime soon probably, but it is nice having that type of an opportunity there and going forward. So, and it's changed a lot in the last, you know, 10 years, quite, quite a lot. So we just have a lot of opportunities in that sector. The other thing is, you know, we do, we do have the big, as much as we want to talk about having other companies and things to work with us and where the focus is, Amazon, Microsoft, T-Mobile, Meta, I mean, those are, those are four giants. And it's just amazing having those here. So we have that factor. And then we have the factor of the smaller mom-and-pop shops, shops, and those kind of things too. So we have that, that gives us a tremendous amount of both people here, but also four different companies who put a lot into the, into the community and into our financing and everything else. So we have that, that goes along well as, in this, in going into this. And I think overall in the city, we're in that period that we're changing in the neighborhoods in these areas, but we're going to be changing in other places too. It's more and more advancing to new circumstances. It's not the same as it was, you know, certainly, Woodbridge is not the same as moved here in '91, and it, we just had Factoria over there, a nice little place and everything. But, so again, I think we're all saying that we, and agreeing with you, that we do have a tremendous opportunities ahead of us to go if we, if we do this right. And I think the idea, again, of the Economic Development Office itself is a good one to look at. And the, you know, we, the, I guess is, from your standpoint, is how do you tie in, how do you work with other parts of the organization, all that? And that's something to sort out from the city manager as well as the staffing and then working with us on that. But again, it just shows that we're growing and there's a need for, and this is an important thing. And I always appreciate your, you know, recognizing that the arts are something that really is a valuable piece for us to have as well. And that's something I think is going to come also in these factors, is something we should put into it, always have. How can we get more people going out to enjoy things, going out to restaurants and all that? So I think we have that type of an opportunity ahead of us as well, so. And I think that your office is doing a great job, and I'm really looking forward to us going, and we just have a tremendous opportunity, so what we have to do is continue to work together and get the job done.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. It has been me and going home. I've been talking for 10 minutes-ish, max, joking. On the workforce development, I 100% agree with Councilmember Zahn. You mentioned other schools, that they are all great schools, but Bellevue College, let's start with them. There are amazing untapped potential for us, that we really need to do something big with them, so 100%. On the research that Mayor mentioned, I would love to do that research with FIFA and watching some games just as a research. So if there is any ticket availability, please let us know. I think the FIFA can put us on the map, and I think we really need to utilize that. It is really amazing opportunity, and people in the world love that. I also would like, as Councilmember Lee mentioned, Councilmember Zahn mentioned, and also Mayor emphasized, I would love to learn more about the office that they brought up. I just wanted to learn more, what is that and how can that be benefit? About the second topic, I believe effective place management and activation of the city majors and businesses district is really crucial for our improving the customer experience, supporting our local and small businesses, and also making Bellevue the vibrant place it is. I have just one question. Do you have any timeline and milestones that you are envisioning to identifying and these management tools or these start, the structures, talking to other folks? Is there any timeline? Or you just need the first confirmation from us, then the timeline and the programming comes to the picture?
Just, we need the first confirmation so we can build out the timelines and report back in the future.
Got you. Perfect. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, great. So is there a motion here?
I move to direct staff to continue to work with existing district organizations and begin engagement with new partners in Crossroads, Factoria, and Wilburton to identify the appropriate structures and tools for business district management.
Second.
Mayor?
Yep.
I did want to, did have a recommendation for adding East Gate, even though it was slightly different model, so can we, can I make that as a?
Well, I think we need to know what the impact of that would be, is, is that going to impact the work in a negative way to add another district? Or can we have a promise to add it later? What do you think?
It will impact work, workload, because it does take a significant amount of staff time to find the stakeholders, bring everybody together. But we could commit to reporting back at the next quarterly report on how we can integrate East Gate into a future work plan.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
Okay, that's fine. I thought you had said that you already had a different model you were looking at for East Gate, and so I was just wanting to incorporate that within the direction so it was clear. But if it's a more of a two-step, then that's fine.
I don't know, just so far so, even bigger question of other areas may want to be included as well, such as.
I retract.
That's a.
No, we, she has retracted that.
I think we need to have more information before we step up and say we want.
We have a motion on the table, and I'm going to see if we want to vote for it, as said, and if we vote, I'll vote no, then we can have another conversation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And with that, we're adjourned.